Good evening and welcome to our school committee meeting of Tuesday, March 1st. We're just coming out of an executive session and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like we do at every meeting, I'm going to read the mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident, lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. We're going to move to the public comment now. We have one person on Zoom. We've got two people here in studio. If there's anyone else on the Zoom that would like to speak, certainly you can raise your hand and the WCAT folks will be on the lookout for you. And I just ask that public comment folks keep your comments to three minutes if at all possible. We are going to start with Irene Oliver. And if you can just-
Hi, can you-
We can hear you. If you can just state your address, Irene.
Yep, Irene Oliver at 2 Jessica Lane.
Awesome, thanks.
Yep, sure. Nice to see everybody again. So, over the weekend, our kids were able to play basketball and softball without masks in town. They were able to go out to eat in a restaurant without masks in town. My oldest daughter is now able to attend the Boys and Girls Club without a mask in town. And finally, my other daughter is now able to attend dance without a mask in town. All of these places have a few things in common, but the most common are children, lots of them. So here I am, again, to advocate for our children when it comes to masking. I'm asking the school committee to reconsider the decision that was made at the last meeting and change the masking policy this evening to making it parental choice effective immediately. We are still masking the humans that are the least impacted by this virus. I understand Mr. Chu is now recommending removing masks or making masks optional in school, starting on 3/3. What I don't understand is the difference between 3/3 and today. Please do not tell us it is about giving you a day to communicate because today I received a text, two phone calls, and an email notifying me that bus number nine at the Galvin was delayed. To me, that means there is no reason why the school committee can't send something out tonight about masks being optional, starting tomorrow via the same communication channel. Finally, in the last meeting, there was some discussion about adding in language to this same policy about vaccinated versus unvaccinated. I would also like to request that the language be removed or not be included for two reasons. Number one, we know both vaccinated and unvaccinated are able to get COVID, but also spread COVID. And two, as I read through some of the student support services that are offered here in Wakefield, I wonder how true some of these statements are today. For example, under the developmental relationship frameworks, it says, "Share power. Treat me with respect and give me a say." Another one, under the 40 developmental assets, equality and social justice. Don't these mean anything? Isn't one of the core values at the Galvin, and I assume throughout the entire Wakefield Public School system, is acceptance, celebrating our differences? Don't we teach our kids to embrace diversity, inclusion, and acceptance in our community? Well, these are the reasons why that language should be excluded. Thank you again for your time, and please, let us decide what is best for our children tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Irene. Greg.
Good evening. I'm Greg Spry of 14 Turnbull Avenue. Friends, at the most recent meeting, I asked the school committee if they would follow the month-long credo of listen to DESI. And not only did they not listen to DESI, they did not listen to the long line of parents who bravely marched up here. Despite hearing heartbreaking witness to the negative effects masks have had, it appears that partisan policy won the day again with this group. Also at that meeting, I suggested that ignoring the community about the logo was our warning sign about the character of the overall committee. And removing the mask mandate was another chance to listen, listen to the majority. The committee failed us once again. So now we're past warning signs about the character. We're on red alert, and I feel that action is required in the way of voting, you know? We need committee members who will treat this position in the spirit in which it is intended, and that is to be the voice of the people. Just because you have power does not mean you need to use it. The last meeting was a perfect example of that. You didn't have to do anything except step back, follow the direction of DESI, like almost all our neighboring communities did, and watch the children smile again. But the majority of you just can't help yourselves. It seems that the temptation of power is too great. Aristotle once said, "Don't listen to what people say, watch what they do." I have watched this committee's actions too long, and I cannot stand back any longer. I've decided to pull papers and to run for school committee. I admire the commitment you all make, but I feel that the positions are being misused, and I'd like an opportunity to serve. I thank you for allowing me to speak. I don't want to make it about me or any announcement, you know, my personal school committee intentions. I ultimately want this to be about the children, and I think that's unfortunately who's getting left behind in all this. You know, we've had an opportunity to unmask the kids, to remove the detriments that it's been to their learning, detriments that this committee has acknowledged exists, and yet, you know, you play games with the power. And it's not everyone, but I feel that, you know, unfortunately, it's the majority, and with that, the majority rules, and unfortunately, our hands have been tied as parents. But I think it's our chance to unchuckle ourselves through the voting booth this April 26th, get some new, fresh ideas out there, and to hopefully put people in place that, you know, are granted power, but know when not to use it. So I thank you for this opportunity to speak and for all the service that you all put in. Thank you.
Alex.
Hello, Alex McCarrawitz, 53 Eustis Ave. Well, thank you for having me again. And I just, I'll be super quick this time, I promise. I just wanted to address the masking policy and kind of what has happened since the last time for my family personally, since I addressed the board. I did stick to the promises that I made to not just the board, to everybody that was watching. And I did not send my kids to school with masks yesterday or today. My oldest is six years old. He's a first grader at the Walton, and he is autistic and had a meltdown as soon as we approached the door because every other kid was wearing a mask. One, he didn't want to look different. And two, in his mind, it translated to COVID's still in our schools. So there was that boundary of now he doesn't feel safe not having a mask anywhere near the school. Mind you, I back up to the Walton, like I throw him over the fence some days, that to me, that's worrisome as a mom. So he is six years old. I let him make his own choice. He went in and he wore his mask that he had in his cubby. Later that day, he comes running out of the Boys and Girls Club, biggest smile on his face, "Mommy, I could breathe. I didn't need to wear the mask. COVID's not at the Boys and Girls Club." And again, I think it's that, the way his mind processes things, and it's very typical, I think, of how children think in general, whether they're on the spectrum or not. My other two, they walked in, no problem. They walked out with masks on, to which I just removed, and they said, "Our teachers made us put them on." And I said, "You're not in trouble? Like, let's get in the car, like we're holding up the pickup line. We'll talk about it at home." I sent an email to the school, to the principal, to the nurse, to the teachers, to the parents, stating that my children will not be wearing masks, that they will be using their medical mask exemptions that they have not used since the beginning of COVID. My kids walked out with masks on today again and said to me, "My teachers made me put it on." Now, when a parent is specifically saying and has documentation from their doctor, from a pulmonologist at Children's Hospital, who we've had this on record since last year, my request for my children is being ignored? That's not okay. And it makes them not know who to trust, who's in charge, who's not. My mom says I don't need to, and I have the right not to, but my teachers are saying I don't have that choice. My mommy can't make that decision for me. And that's why I am following in the other two recommendation that it ends tonight. Not wait till the 8th, not wait for Mr. Chu's 3/3, just end it tonight. Let us get back to normalcy. Let it be parent choice. And I know you can't answer questions, but I just have one out there that I know a lot of other parents do in terms of the verbiage with the face covering policies, when it talks about the vaccinated and unvaccinated students and kind of putting that out there. I know the board had talked a lot in your discussion before the vote last month, not drawing those lines, not trying to create, like, two different groups, to not segregate people by policies, procedures, language, and stuff. So I do encourage and hope that that will be really looked at in terms of what the exact wording is so we don't fall into a trap, you know, maybe a month down the line if the CDC or DESI comes out with new guidelines that could get us into trouble then. And lastly, similar to Greg, apparently, people heard my little witty comment when I said I couldn't afford the fancy signs to run for school committee. And I have also pulled papers just to give it my all and give it a change, maybe a fresh eyes on the same situations that you have all been dealing with for years, helping our children, could bring new ideas and new perspective out there. And that's all I have. Thank you so much for letting me speak again.
Thanks, Alex. WCAT folks, do we have anybody else on Zoom for public comment?
Not that we can see.
Okay. All right. We will move to Student Advisory Council, if there's anybody on. I'm guessing they're all-
No students here tonight. They're all at the basketball game.
At the basketball game. That's where they should be. Okay. Then we've got Consent Agenda.
The school committee approved the minutes of February 15, 2022, school committee meeting, and the minutes of the February 9, 2022, special school committee meeting with the WEA, and accept the minutes of the February 16, 2022, school committee Student Services Subcommittee meeting, and the minutes of February 17, 2022, school committee Finance and Facilities Subcommittee meeting, as presented.
Second.
A motion made in seconded, discussion? I have something. I almost forgot. Okay, so I have an amendment to the meeting notes, or sorry, the meeting minutes from February 15. So I'd like to, I don't know exactly how to do this. I meant to figure this out before I do it. So there's language that we need to add in to those minutes that note the motion that was made. So there was a motion made, motion one, I call it, made by Amy Wall, that said, "I moved at the school committee vote to rescind the current face coverings policy effective 2/28/2022, and task the policy Subcommittee to write a new policy stating masking is optional, starting on Monday, February 28, 2022." That motion failed in a vote, there were two yes votes, Amy Wall and Amy Lehman, and five no votes, me, Tom Markham, Kevin, Mike, and Stephen. Motion two was made by Tom Markham, the same language. "I moved at the school committee vote to rescind the current face covering policy effective March 9, 2022, and task the policy Subcommittee to write a new policy stating masking is optional, starting Wednesday, the 9th, 2022." It was a yes vote from me, Tom, Kevin, and Stephen, a no vote from Amy, Amy, and Mike. So I'm asking that we all, that we amend the meeting minutes that were put forward as part of the consent agenda with those additional details. Did I do that right?
You did. That was terrific.
Okay, so-
So the motion has been amended.
Okay.
You made a motion to amend the main motion. Is there a second?
Okay. And then is there discussion on that second?
Right.
Seeing none. All in favor?
This is on the amendment.
On the amendment.
Yeah.
All opposed. Okay. Six to zero. We don't have, Amy Wall is not here tonight. Okay. For our main event, budget.
We haven't voted the actual motion. We've just amended the actual motion.
Okay. So discussion on the original motion. Seeing none. All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Now, onto the main event, budget review items, our budget review. Christine, it looks like you've got some slides.
So are we going to, so in regard to an update on the policy and policy and communication?
Yep, that's in the Subcommittee reports.
Got it.
So we were going to do budget, and then we were going to do your updates, and then we're going to do the policy.
Okay. I was just wondering if taking that out of order might cap the conversation about masks, but I'll follow your lead.
So only because two of our public folks just left to go home, I almost feel like we're probably better off holding it because in the agenda that was printed online.
Okay.
Do you make a motion to move it out of order, or how do you do that?
We usually just agree to take it out of order. I mean, we can't, yeah, I mean, if someone wants to make a motion to take it out of order.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to take the face coverings policy, move it up to now.
Okay. Motion made in seconded, discussion? My only concern is that Greg and Alex just walked out of here, and I don't know that they were expecting that conversation to happen right away.
I don't think they're gonna, they're gonna find out soon as they get home.
The meetings are closed?
Either way, so, yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay, so we're going to take the policy discussion out of order, and then we'll come back to budget.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. So the Policy and Communication Subcommittee met yesterday. We were joined by Anthony as well, since one of the parts of our agenda was to review and look back at the face coverings policy, EBCFA, for those paying attention at home. You know, we talked a little bit, Superintendent Lyons, I don't want to speak for you, but if you want to add, but he had mentioned about how some of the emerging data, coupled with some of the announcements made by the CDC, really brought up some questions for the policy that we had laid on the table at the last school committee meeting, and really wanted us to revisit the draft. And he asked Anthony, our health director, to be there as well. So he was very gracious in his time and spent some time answering questions, providing his perspective, as he has along as well. He kind of echoed some of the things that the superintendent was saying about some of the recent changes at the CDC, particularly regarding metrics, and then the classification of communities, either as low, medium, or high. And as most of us probably know, we are considered low here in Wakefield, and just that there's a changing landscape. And so he felt comfortable at this time, and if anyone disagrees with me, but he felt comfortable making the suggestion that masks do become optional and to consider that. We talked a little bit, then, you know, conversation ensued with the Subcommittee. We asked him for some clarification. I had asked the superintendent about positives test results on the first day, at least that had been reported by then. As one of the speakers had mentioned, Anthony's suggestion was, like he did, I think, with the Board of Health, was to have a day, a buffer in between, mostly around communication, buckle, you know, work, especially with families who might have some medically vulnerable families that they can prepare, or if there's things that they need to do. So that's at least how I interpreted what he said when I was working on the notes. So the Subcommittee went ahead and at least addressed the policy and forwarded it to the committee to see what some of the suggested amendments to the policy that we laid on the table would be. And what we're suggesting, if you have it in front of you, on the second paragraph that starts with "according to public health experts," we're striking the word in the last sentence, "requirements." Then now here comes the larger changes. On the next paragraph that starts, "a face covering," if we pretty much strike that entire paragraph, what it's going to say instead, to replace that paragraph, is "all individuals and members of the school community should continue to mask if so desired. Faculty, staff, and students who choose to continue to wear masks will be supported under current WPS policies." I think it's important to all of us that those that choose to mask certainly should continue to do so, should have no ramifications for making that choice, if that's the one that they, their families, or themselves, if they're a faculty or staff member, want to do. The next line that starts with "individuals" was also struck. It's really important, and Anthony, I think, made a point, and this was something that MASC had encouraged us to put in, too, was that highlighted part. That remains unchanged. "So students and staff returning from five-day quarantine following a positive COVID test must follow strict mask use, other than when eating, drinking, or outside, and conduct active monitoring for symptoms through day 10 of exposure." That seems pretty common with practice, particularly because even after day five, you could still be shedding the virus. And then, as is just a general, I believe, Commonwealth law, but masks will be required in all health offices, which is the case. The next sentence that starts with "by federal public health order," we're striking that as well. And then lastly, just under guidance statements, the links are still good, but the updated dates no longer are relevant, so we're striking those updated dates as well. So I don't know if any of the other Subcommittee members or Superintendent, if you want to provide any feedback.
I had a question. So the policy, as it's rewritten, doesn't really talk about the date. Is that correct, Kevin? Just to make sure.
That's correct. That would be a different motion, yeah.
So I would like to put forward a motion that we accept that policy effective immediately.
I'll second that.
Motion made in seconded, discussion? What was Anthony Choi's recommendation on timing? It was the 3rd to give a day of communication?
Timing, he had suggested the 3rd.
Because the reality is, we're not going to be able to get a communication out tonight.
He had said he would be comfortable on Thursday or Friday. And the reason is, from a public health perspective, that there are families that are going to be impacted differently. We know everyone wants to be out of masks, but families are going to be impacted differently, and this would give them notice to make additional plans or give them some time. So there's a lot to consider on the spectrum of parents and families that we're serving here, but that was his guidance. Correct me if I'm off.
That's accurate.
Thank you.
Can I comment on that?
Sure.
I don't think a communication is going to take more than 10 minutes to make, and whether we tell them tonight, first thing tomorrow morning, or sometime during the day tomorrow, I just don't see that that's really going to make a big difference, honestly. That's just my opinion.
Go ahead, please.
Sure. No, I think the point being made was that there are families that don't feel necessarily safe right now because they're, they're not sure what that landscape looks like. It does look, you know, pretty well for a majority of us, but there are families that we serve that don't feel safe in that environment. And so changing the policy sort of effective immediately doesn't give them any, any space to, excuse the expression, to breathe, to sort of realize that this is what the school is going to look like, you know, not just, not tomorrow, but give them like a little bit of time to sort of say, okay, how is our family going to approach this? Give them some time for planning, give them some time to get to a comfort level with it. And I think he was saying a couple of days would maybe serve that purpose, or to have a little bit of compassion behind it.
I also want to add that, you know, Anthony, his perspective is public health, right? It's not political. It's public health. And so, you know, and he, from his perspective, he represents all families. And so in light of the new CDC information and guidance that come out on Friday, the 25th, which changed and kind of changed their requirements and their discretion to not, or to require, they changed it, right, to, to make masks an option on buses, and to make masks, they're recommending making masks optional in school, right? But they're also putting language in there that says "effective immediately," from their perspective, but they're still leaving it to local kind of communities to make decisions. And so any, with that new guidance, any district, and there are several districts in the Middle Sex League that looked for a little bit of time after the February break, just to create a grace period, that new guidance challenged all of this. So just to be clear around preparation and negotiation, and so I don't want people to think for a second that either the Subcommittee or the Director of the Board of Health took that guidance from CDC lightly. This conversation started Friday, Saturday, and so this went over the weekend, preparation for, to change the policy with Kevin, and I don't want to speak for you, Kevin, but I, it started on Sunday. So Kevin's preparation around hearing, you know, feedback from our last meeting around not splitting camps, around vaccinated and unvaccinated, and working on language, actually started, that conversation started Sunday. We convened, we had a standing meeting, but the agenda was changed to prioritize this policy to try to keep pace with the change that's being suggested here by the CDC. So just a little context that I think is important to note. Our nurses, you know, our nurses are also a little concerned about this change, because in any of these changes, it creates different ripples. And our nurses want families and students to know that, that because we're changing masking, the masking policy, doesn't mean that COVID is gone, right? Doesn't mean that if people are positive, that they're still going to need to isolate. If there's a known close contact, they're still requiring kind of quarantining, right? So those things are still on the table. There's still effective mitigation strategies that are, the D E S C is asking us to practice. I just want to be clear in just filling in a greater context. I am in favor of the change and making it earlier. Just want to be clear. But that's, I think, where we're at. I also want to reflect accurately the work that's been done to this point.
Yeah, I completely respect, you know, that it's two days going to make a difference. Quite honestly, you could use that argument in either case, quite honestly.
Absolutely, please.
And I think those families that have, have children that are more concerned, they haven't been in a hole the last three or four days. They know it's on its way, so I'm sure they are mentally preparing themselves or planning for what's going to happen when that happens anyway. I don't know that two days is really going to make a difference in that regard. They've been thinking about it since we voted to get rid of the masks on the 9th, so I can't believe they're all of a sudden, oh my God, saying, "We got to figure out what we're going to do now." They certainly have been thinking about it. So that's why I just think, you know, it's time.
So I don't, I don't think that every family thinks that tomorrow morning, they're going to wake up and send their kids without masks. Many kids are already in bed, and there are some families who, and we heard from them in email, they did not come here in person, but that we did hear from them in email about their concerns about removing masks. I'm surprised that this is where Anthony Choi landed, because to me, the CDC guidance is a macro view of the country, giving guidance, not what is going on in this community. We talked about the fact that there are, it was vacation week, that people were going to be socializing and out and about more so than normal, that we see numbers go up when that happens. So I'm honestly quite surprised that this is where- So I'm honestly quite surprised that this is where we are, and this is the discussion that we're having. That said, I wholeheartedly believe that we should be listening to our public health director. He is the expert, and he is the person that we should be listening to. So I will put aside the fact that I think that it's, that we've completely just ignored the fact that we're coming off of vacation and we expect cases to go up. My preference is to wait until Thursday and to give families a day to have some conversations with kids who might be anxious about walking back into school with no masks or not, and more the younger kids. I mean, the older kids can figure it out, but I think that for some younger kids, that's going to be a little disturbing. And so I would, I would support a Thursday date, not a tomorrow date. Any other comments in the discussion? Go ahead, Tom.
Thank you. So, you know, lots of things obviously have been floating all of our different ways in the last, last two years, never mind the last, you know, two weeks. And one of the things that really concerned me is some of the comments that were made both around this table and by our public health director at our last meeting, when asked some pretty pointed questions by us. I couldn't agree more with the superintendent, that Anthony is a public health director. He needs to, he needs to come from that space, he needs to represent that space. I think he is a professional and is to be trusted and to be understood and heard. But the guidance that preceded his visit with us last meeting, and I asked a handful of probing questions of him, that I found, you know, very, very telling, that really took it out of the realm of science and public health policy and put it into the realm of politics and compromise. And that's frankly where I landed at our last meeting, after, after we had another very robust and good conversation among, around the table, which I think we do and have had. And I, and that's what, that's sort of where I was at the last meeting, and landing in a space that wasn't, you know, it was really following the public health guidelines from the state, the State Department of Public Health, State Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the Commissioners, the Governor, and others. And not having a necessity to have masks go until the end of March or even the third weekend to March. I think we landed in a fair place last week when we, two weeks ago, rather, when we said on March 9th. But then, like the superintendent said, the world changed again on Friday, when the CDC comes out. You know, I, and I think I can probably speak for us, or certainly don't intend to, but I think can certainly speak well, we have worked really, really hard in the last two years, starting with lots of unknowns around COVID, flying without a net, there's no playbook for this. I think we worked sincerely and genuinely to follow the guidance of public health officials, and worked really hard to keep this out of, out of politics and the swing of public opinion. And sometimes that flies in the face of the type of work we have to do. And, you know, but now that being said, that all that guidance from public health officials, the guidance from the medical community, and the scientists, and the statisticians has dramatically changed. I heard this categorized or as something like, you know, we shouldn't be, you know, we shouldn't be punishing people, you know, for continuation of masking policies when we should be looking more at choice. I now agree with that position because the science has changed. The needle has moved. The game has changed, and the needle has moved, and I think people should be proud, as opposed to feeling punished. People should feel rewarded because of good behavior. We have, by and large, worn masks. We have been vaccinated as a community. Certainly, people have a choice on what they want to do and what they don't want to do. But I think the community in Middlesex County and have, and citizens have done their very best to comply and to support and to bring us to a place where the statistics show a very different picture than we were, say, last October, excuse me, last August, when we were struggling with what to do for the opening of school. So, you know, that sort of being said, my, and with the picture again changing dramatically with CDC coming out on Friday, I don't, I don't believe, you know, in all of, I agree with what Mike was saying, with our capacity to provide information to people in a very timely way is real. I think that this is the, perhaps, you know, the second biggest topic that's being talked about in the world today, other than the invasion of Yugoslavia, is what's going on with masks. So I don't think anyone is sitting under a rock not understanding and seeing that these conversations are happening at the local level, at the state level, everywhere. I think people will be able to hear and know the information that comes out of the meeting tonight. I'm prepared to support the motion as made with direct understanding and real appreciation for the policy part of the motion, that I think you guys did terrific amount of work to get us to this place two weeks ago, and real, real, real yeoman work in the last several days, or last several hours, I suppose, to provide some revisions that are really representative of where we are today. The type of things that you are prepared to delete or recommend are be deleted, I think are good. The distinguishing between vaccinated and non-vaccinated students and individuals, I think, is an important thing to delete from the policy. So I want to say to my colleagues on the policy committee, thank you for this work. It isn't easy work, and I want to thank you for that. And I do support the motion, not only to enforce the policy as revised now thrice, but to remove the mask as a mandate, making it parental choice effective immediately.
Any other comments or discussion? Go ahead, Kevin.
Just real quick, you know, I'm somewhat disquieted. It's hard in the sense that, you know, two weeks, was it last week?
It was two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, again.
Seems like yesterday, doesn't it?
In some ways it does, in some ways it feels like a lifetime ago. We met and certainly hashed this out and asked really good questions, and, you know, I would say, I think we settled where I think was appropriate at that time, and things change. You know, I think it's been said more eloquently than maybe I can now. And I think, you know, hearing Anthony come to a point where he felt comfortable suggesting was meaningful, and certainly something I think about. What I think sometimes has been lost, both with like speakers who have spoken in front of us, comments that others have made, is that the people who spoke in front of us two weeks ago were compelling, and that's undeniable, and was incredibly appreciative of the fact that people always, when they're always willing to come and to share their perspective and their stories, and they were impactful. And I very much disagree with anyone who thinks or makes the claim that we didn't pay attention to what they said. I always have a really hard time when that sort of accusation is made, because I don't think any of us, again, I won't necessarily speak for all of us, but I think I can in the sense that we take everybody's perspective in mind. But when you are elected, I don't think we're just a representative that we just rubber stamp what a majority says. I think you elect those of us to make informed decisions. They're always going to agree with what the majority is. So I feel really comfortable with the decision that we made, but I'm also comfortable revisiting that, and I think that's evident, I think, in the policy that's here. But what you did in here two weeks ago, unfortunately, and you just got to take my word for it, although it's been said by others, so if you don't believe me, you know it's true, we received a lot of emails from people talking about their personal stories, the situations with their children, that were just as impactful as those that spoke in front of us. Now, we all know the spoken word and what's on video is very impactful, and we can't read the private notes that we receive from families. So please know, for those that, you know, were very much impacted by what was said, as we all were last week, said so well and eloquently, that equally eloquent were the concerns that others. So that one-day buffer is important in the sense of there are students who are very anxious, there are students who are immunocompromised, there are staff or faculty who are maybe going to be anxious. It's eight o'clock, in less than 12 hours, some students will be, and some faculty and staff will be entering our schools. Now, there's a lot of people probably watching more than we think, and word will get around awfully fast, but I think allowing one more day to respect those that unfortunately weren't here, but we know are here in terms of our emails, to respect their perspective, to respect their children as well, and to respect our faculty and staff one more day. So I would personally plan on not voting for this motion to make it immediate. I'm going to take Anthony's suggestion to go with the third, and I know that's going to be really disappointing to many of us who are ready to rip these off, but I think it's respecting the lived experience of those that have the other side of the coin. 24 more hours, I'd be much more comfortable supporting, but I'm supporting in general moving it up as well.
Go ahead.
So, Kevin, thank you for your words. I don't think that this is a conversation to be won or lost, right? I feel like there, these, you know, I was listening to the speakers earlier this evening, you know, this, you know, I too, we are all impacted by this. We are all ready for change, right? So for, in that space, we agree, right? Changing from the ninth to earlier, revisiting this, we were initially going to revisit this on the eighth. We've changed because the guidance have changed, has changed. We're trying to do this sooner because we have new information, right? And so we're in a better space than we thought we were going to be, and we're just trying to make the best decision that we can under the circumstances, while again, serving all families. So I think I would just respectfully ask anyone who might be watching just to please give a little grace, whatever decision is made, whatever the vote might be, right? Because, you know, on the other side of this, we have to support students and all of their needs, and families as well. And so, and that's our work. But, you know, I just, I just feel that there's sometimes a lot of pressure in regard to this, you know, I need to win and get it immediately, and it's a win or it's a loss, when I would just say, you know, on the other side of a win and a loss, we still have to be able to maintain relationships. So just one perspective that I just feel like sometimes can get lost in the conversation. But thank you for your comments, Kevin.
Go ahead, Tom.
Thank you. So Doug, I couldn't agree more, and I too want to thank Kevin for his very thoughtful comments, as well as, as well as your words, Doug, because we can't lose that. We can't lose the sense of that we indeed are here to do our very best, to become aware of the best we can, and to serve and support the needs of all students and all staff. That can't be lost in this, in what has come from a place of science and medical guidance to now we're discussing a matter of 24 to 48 hours. And so I appreciate that, and you're absolutely right. And I think, hopefully, most of the community has seen that in the discussions, the thoughtful discussions that we've had, the presentations, the work that you and your team have done for the last two years, the work that we've been able to do across, you know, partnering with a town hall and getting additional supports, and staff supports, and additional staffing and nursing resources into the school district. I think we have, are collectively moved mountains to support students and staff in some pretty earnest ways in this COVID pandemic. I think we all certainly want it to come to an end, and whether we believe that the end is in sight, or we believe that COVID is a new part of life, that we just have to figure out ways to deal with, which is probably more the latter. And I think we begin with that at this time, and I think whether, whether it's immediate or whether it's a Thursday, whether it's Wednesday or Thursday, becomes a minutia, you know, really. But I appreciate, again, appreciate the work of the policy subcommittee to get us to this place. Appreciate Kevin's remarks and yours as well, Doug.
All right. We ready to vote? So the motion is to accept the policy as presented, which was modified.
Revised policy.
Right, the revised policy to go in effect immediately. All in favor? Oh, boy. All opposed.
It doesn't pass.
So what do we do in a tie?
It doesn't pass. A tie does not pass.
So I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion that we approve the amended WPS face covering policy, EBCFA, effective Thursday, March 3rd.
Second?
Discussion? Motion made and seconded, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, all opposed. Okay. So the policy, I just want to, I just want to make sure that people realize, because some folks in the, in the room, as well as, at least, I think we all got an email, I know I got an email, regarding the language. I just want people to be very clear that the language that was omitted was the distinction around vaccinated versus unvaccinated. So I just want to, I want, because I don't think that was totally clear, Kevin, when you were going through it, and I think that's an important distinction for us to make. You, I know Irene so badly wants to say something over there, and I, do you promise you'll be fast?
It's just a question, when, so if the policy, you know, has been--
Oh, Alex, not Irene, my bad. God.
That can be rejected by Dusty or no, like when that's submitted now, the new masking policy, like that's, nobody higher up can say, no, no, right?
Nope.
Okay.
It's done.
So now we're going to talk about budget.
Yay.
Okay.
Glad you came back, man.
Doug's kicking us off.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate the time, and I know tonight was supposed to be only about budget. It seems like every year that we have our budget conversation, we take on a little bit more on the agenda. So I have to get the clicker.
I've got the clicker. Do you want to? Do you want me to do it?
Just pass it down.
Okay.
I think Kara has a control issue.
No, I didn't even ask for it. I just got handed it to her.
Good. So our goals for the evening is we are presenting the proposed FY23 Wakeville Public Schools budget to the school committee for review and approval. So our goal for this presentation is to share budget priorities that align, you've heard this before, with the WPS and district instructional strategy. The instructional strategy and our goals are the backbone of what we do. This, we will also share budget survey results from our most recent FY23 budget survey, which was open to the community, faculty, and staff, and our ESER survey that had faculty, staff, students, and the community as well. Between both surveys, we have about 1,350, close to 1,400 participants between both surveys. So in regard to due diligence and feedback, I don't think we've ever had a higher rate of participation, which I think is, I think it speaks to the time and the fact that our work has never been more public. That includes school committee as well, right? And so we want to explain our proposed budget priorities and what the associated increases are in the budget. There will be time at the end for questions and answers.
Doug, before you go on, I, as we're sitting here, I'm kind of remembering the process in the past. So we have tonight where you walk us through all of this.
Correct.
We have a budget forum for the public to come and speak next week at 7:15. Anybody who's paying attention? It's at 7:15, the budget hearing starts. Our meeting starts at seven, but you have to pick a time, so the hearing starts at 7:15. And then we vote on the 22nd of March.
Exactly.
And so tonight is a lot about you presenting and us asking questions, but there will be additional opportunity to ask questions on the 22nd.
Correct.
Okay. I just want everybody to be clear about kind of how this is, like we're, we don't have to get to end of game tonight. There's a lot of information, right? And so, and we definitely want to hear from the public next week.
We have public participation-- We have public participation next week. We are also doing an informational session with FinCom Thursday night.
Right, yes.
We don't ask any questions next week. We wait until.
Correct.
Yes.
Right?
One other piece, when we vote on the 22nd, it's just a vote to move it to town meeting. It's really up to the town whether the budget gets approved.
Exactly.
Okay.
Right?
Okay.
Well.
Go ahead, I.
So there's a little, there's a little if there, it's a little, you know, it's a big red asterisk. What we're asking of the town is to support a bottom line appropriation figure, not necessarily the line items within. What Doug and Christine are going to present tonight and what they're going to present to the community is how we anticipate spending the dollars. But we're asking the town to fund the bottom line, not to, we're not asking the community to vote on the line items per se.
No, okay, I know that.
No, I just, yeah, I'm sorry.
Right, the school is actually the only town budget that can manage their own budget. Is that correct?
In that, well, between lines, yes.
Yeah.
But just to clarify a question, kind of what Amy said. So the Finance Committee doesn't necessarily have to approve our budget?
No, so we're doing two meetings with FinCom. So we present to you first. We have an informational session with them on Thursday. We'll have, on the eighth, we will have our public participation, right? And answer any additional questions that need to be answered. If we need to make any adjustments, we will. And then on the 22nd, there will be a vote, right? And then we will go back to FinCom and kind of share with them the approved budget by School Committee. We will then present to FinCom. And they will kind of, they will kind of go through their paces and ask us questions. A lot of the questions that they have have already been addressed through their liaisons that have worked with us at the subcommittee level. So our level of communication with FinCom, I don't think has ever been better than it had, than it is currently. So we're anticipating favorable action at this point. I know that they will have several questions. And there will be questions about year-over-year costs, grants, et cetera. But we'll get there.
But they haven't seen the full budget presentation yet.
The whole Finance Committee.
It's first to School Committee.
The liaisons haven't even seen.
Oh, even they haven't seen.
So we talked, we've talked about it in generalities and talked about the kinds of things we need to invest in. But they do not, they have not seen what we are seeing tonight.
Great, that's good, thank you.
And then do you present to Town Council too at some point?
We do. We do. We have a full road show, Amy, if you'd like to come with us.
That whole schedule is one of these pages.
It's in the timeline.
Okay.
So, so, so just to get back on track here.
Yeah, sorry.
No, it's okay. We have 20, we have about 22 slides. And Kara, Christine and I each have parts of this presentation. So if we could ask respectfully to hold your questions to the end, there'll be time for us to go through this. So in regard to our priorities, our priorities are based on, on the information that we're collecting as data and also kind of what we are determining based on that data are most critical. Okay? So that the gaps in learning due to the pandemic are just very, very critical. We've talked about learning loss. You know, you've heard others talk about, you know, Anthony Choi spoke last night at Town Council where he spoke about, you know, we are in a recovery phase from COVID, which is very accurate. And that phrase is becoming more and more common as people are describing, you know, as communities are trying to get back on track. So our first priority is kind of really addressing learning loss, gaps in learning due to the pandemic. We want to look at opportunities to not only catch students up, but to accelerate students that are prepared for opportunities to take on more challenging work at all levels, elementary, middle and high. We want to look at kind of the academic achievement, the social emotional success of all students. And we're looking at kind of our adjustment counselors at the middle and high school level that we added last year through our, through a grant. And so we're also looking at the science positions that we worked with WEA leadership on in negotiations in 2019 that, to be quite honest, was a win for us in prioritizing STEM, right? STEM activity, especially at the elementary level. We knew that our teachers and our students needed support in science instruction at the elementary level. And that bullet number four addresses that. We're looking at support for special education programming around transition services and additional staff that might be needed in those areas. We're looking at increasing opportunities. This has been on our priority list. It was on there last year. It will continue to be on there as it starts to take shape. So the curve, our growth curve kind of flattened because of COVID this past year in this area. But we're looking at dual enrollment opportunities for students to be in high school and get college level experiences as well as student internships. In terms of, we are looking to recruit, retain and develop outstanding teachers, administrators and parent educators. We're trying to take the long view with people that we're bringing into the district that can project and move into leadership positions in years to come. We are also looking to continue our preventative maintenance work, which is different now than it was three years ago in, just in regard to facilities and our collaborative work with DPW. And kind of the backbone here, it's something that's critical that sometimes gets lost, is that the school budget is different than any other department in our town. We serve 594, we serve 3,345 students and their families. But we do that with, with almost 600 employees that are in seven bargaining units, right? And so that sometimes gets lost in the bottom line number when that can be traded around. So.
Great. So, good evening, everyone. I'll take it off from here. So basically, what does that look like, right? Everyone wants to know what the numbers are. So this is a comparison for what we're, we're currently in fiscal year '22. And our budget, if you remember, last year was cut by $360,000 by the town with an anticipation that the town would reimburse that money for COVID-related positions at the end of the year. So that means that we're operating right now at 45,343,200. Our proposed budget that we have before you tonight is $47,607,077. And what does that mean? It's an increase of 4.99% over '22 to '23, a little over $2 million. And we have it broken down for you by personnel, contracted services, materials and supplies. So really, we also wanted to highlight, so what does that mean in '22? And we're still, COVID is not gone. We've all had this conversation about what does that mean? How we've adjusted in this year versus the last two years? So in '22, what did we spend for COVID-related coughs? We had the two adjustment counselors. Like Doug had said, we were fortunate to have a grant. We had to increase testing and assessment services this year by contracted services. Everyone was saying kids weren't ready to come back. What level should they put them back? So we saw that cost dramatically increase. We hired four COVID-related teaching positions. So kids that were in quarantine needed services. We had to hire four. We actually got really lucky. We had four outstanding candidates and we've supported those positions. Two additional custodians and two additional float nurses. That was part of the 360 funded by the town. Also, we provided COVID-related testing clinics this year for all of our staff. I think we did four for a total of $35,000. For a grand total to date, and we're still in March, of $699,821. That was only offset by COVID-2 in this year. So that was about a little over half of that amount of money. ESAR, sorry, ESAR 2. So that was what we're doing in '22. And what are we participating for '23? We are proposing to continue the two float nurses. We are asking to continue the two custodians. And to continue to maintain, we have made such improvements to our facilities and our preventative maintenance. Our air quality tests have come back outstanding. But in order to maintain the improvements we've met, that means we have to spend money. We have to make quarterly air filter changes. They're more expensive. We have to maintain, we have air purifiers. We're still maintaining those in all the interior rooms. Those aren't going away. There's maintenance with those. We're still having storage facilities outside all of our buildings. Our hope is to have those removed, but it's still looking like it's about three to six months away for that. So all that comes at a cost. So for next year, where our projection is that we're going to spend a little over $300,000 for COVID-related costs. We're hoping to have that offset with the Opera Grant from the town. And then, so what does that mean? So for next year, for ESAR 3, as you know, we brought for you, we did our survey and we asked the community, we asked our staff, we asked our families, what do you really think we should invest, our one-time COVID-related grant? So for '23 and '24, we're going to split the 822 over four areas. Individualized instruction for students, after-school and summer tutoring, and providing mental health services and supports. We are required by DSS to make sure that was in this grant. And also to maintain the improvements in air quality in the school facilities. So we're hoping to use that grant over the next two years to maintain all of those areas.
So we talk about knowns and unknowns. So what we know is that direct instruction and intervention services, including counseling, are top priorities. They've been highlighted by teachers. They've been highlighted by parents. They've been highlighted in our ESAR grant and our budget survey. They have been highlighted in regard to individual meetings that we have done school to school. So in regard to our preparation for this budget and really going to the end users, going to our teachers, I feel like this budget really does an exceptional job in meeting the needs of students in classrooms. In regard to unknowns, human resource challenges are real. Human resource challenges are real. I think I would ask you respectfully to please hear my words on this. So, you know, we're looking to fill some positions right now that we are really getting, we're really underwhelmed at the response that we're getting for some positions that we have open. And we're thinking about, you know, what might, what might Plan B look like if we are unable to fill those positions? We are also seeing and have discussed with our Finance and Facility Subcommittee as well as our Labor Subcommittee and our FinCom liaisons, the very real issue of services that were available outside of our district in regard to special education services. Where students, if we could not serve them in district, we were able to send them to a collaborative or to, to kind of get additional testing in spaces. A lot of those, a lot of those schools and a lot of those structures and resources have closed or they're so full and overwhelmed, we can't get access to them. So kind of the landscape is changing a little bit in regard to human resource challenges and supply chain challenges. So there'll be more information to follow on that. Another unknown is the, kind of the stabilization fund, our Special Education Stabilization Fund. And I put that as an unknown. We accessed that in last year's budget. It was, so our stabilization fund, it's designed to be at a level of $500,000. Last year, we accessed $230,000 out of that. And we're working right now with the town to think about how that could be refunded in the fall, at the fall town meeting. More to follow on that. And the other question is meals. So far, for the last year plus, our meals have been at no cost to our students. That added kind of benefit to students and families has been, I think, tremendously helpful. So in regard to the budget, this slide is really important. I know you all have these slides. But this slide is particularly important because what it does, we had shared with this committee that we want to start to put priorities into tiers, right? Like, so what was listed as a first priority? What was listed as a second priority? And to pay attention to how we might be creative at addressing, if we get done, if we are able to address all of our first priorities, how do we address second priorities, right? So you'll see here, our first row are the first priorities, the first highest priorities that were listed by participants that took the WPS budget survey this year. So our number one kind of area of, that was highlighted was Math and ELA Intervention Specialists. And we've addressed that in this budget. We talked about STEM, Science, Technology and Engineering. We think that the two additional teachers that we're looking at hiring in the area of science will kind of address this, not in its entirety, but address it at the elementary level. We're looking at District Intervention Services. And we're looking about ways of how to use Wakefield Academy and how to stretch the year horizontally, like for students that need support in the summer. How do we access those students and how do we support them? And we're also thinking about lengthening the school day for those that need it. And so we're looking at digital learning specialists. As we go down the list, you know, these, so from left to right, we're looking at, these are our highest priorities. And as we move down the list, they are our lower priorities, right? We want to try to be very thoughtful about services to students, right, in this budget. So more to follow. You'll also see that we are looking at counselors and psychologists as well as the reading, writing curriculum. So the number of participants, so this slide is just informational. In regard to the budget, 564 responses. This was the breakdown in regard to the personnel that took the survey. We broke out the information a little bit differently this year. Last year, we used to have these bar graphs. And we created pie charts this year just to create a different visual. But we also wanted to have kind of this list here because when you're thinking about tiers, we're thinking about work that we're doing in the subcommittees. So these tiers, as we're working through the budget and we're addressing Math and ELA, you know, questions about how we might be supporting counselors and psychologists and how that might be beneficial to students, that's a tier two, but that conversation needs to continue to happen, right? And I hope that we can revisit these priorities in our FY '24 proposal to see the progress that we've made. And you'll also see the way that this is arranged. Quality teaching is the first bullet in our instructional strategy under, under teaching, right? We want to hire and retain the most competitive faculty and staff that we can. So the second part of our instructional strategy is rigorous curriculum. Again, this is just a same breakout, same structure. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, but you can see what the priorities are. This was summarized in the first slide. These are just graphics that kind of give you more information on the summary slide that we presented to start. Same here with individualized student learning. This is an important piece, the individualized student learning piece. When we talk about the range never being greater in our classes at all levels, this bullet or this particular category is something that is, that is critical and something that we're going to need to continue to talk about. District personnel, you know, a digital learning specialist, that's a nice to have. I don't know if that's going to trump anything on the first three slides or in the first row of the summary slide that we started with. Facilities and operations. Christine's words are important and I hope that you caught them in regard to how we treat facilities, work we do in facilities now has changed, right? The engineering report that we did a few years ago, the collaborative work that we're doing with DPW, the cost of that work, that has changed. And that's represented in our budget.
So this is kind of more of the same on survey results. This just gives an overview of our community survey results and who participated and what their roles are. And then the results, I'll just kind of hit on the top line, which is what I'll really prioritize and very similar themes to what Doug and Christine have already talked about, just the desire to have more tutoring programs, student intervention, counseling services and, and facilities that are safe learning environments for our students. and facilities that are safe learning environments for our students. So it was kind of nice to see that match up to some of our other themes.
So just to, I want to add, this information was presented earlier in the year when this survey was done. So this is a second look at us. And we've looked very closely in our Student Services Subcommittee at this information as well.
And then the proposal, just again, a breakdown of the requests. Again, in addition of two more science specialist teachers, we have seen really strong results from our two science specialist teachers who have been working throughout this year, targeting grades three and four. Like Doug said, I think we've never seen, you know, we're getting really great feedback that our students are getting access to more consistent hands-on science education, which I think we'll see great results on from years to come. And that model's worked out really well with our general ed classroom teachers supporting the science education as well and, you know, serving in kind of like a co-teaching role at times and working directly with the science specialist teachers. So that's really worked out well. And we'd love to carry that down to cover grades kindergarten through second grade with two more specialist teachers for science. And then we talked about the need for the adjustment counselors, one at Galvin, one at the high school. They have been really critical this year, especially. I think even on a more normal year, they're critical. I think we are seeing the needs for our students and also our families. I don't think it can be lost that the adjustment counselors, the work of all of our counselors goes beyond direct service to students. They're often working with our parents and guardians and families to help navigate just supporting students with mental health issues, crises, crisis. It's a very daunting task. So I think our counselors have been critical to supporting both students directly and their families. And then the ad of a paraprofessional at the Doyle. Typically, when an ad like this is requested, it's really speaking to the complexities of students at this age level around not only academic support, emotional support, but even some personal care components as well. Mobility, feeding, speaking. There can be more complex needs at that age level. And that's when a one-to-one would be required. And then four additional special ed personnel across the district. We'll get into that more in terms of a special ed slide that's further in the presentation. But again, that theme of continuing programming for our students, creating consistency level-to-level and supporting the increase in students with needs.
So I want to be clear. So last year, we filled a number of positions through COVID-related grants. You know, Christine made reference to the COVID-related support when kids are out on quarantine. We had four teaching positions. Those positions are sunsetting. Positions, if we've decided, we know that we're negotiating a cliff when we fund positions with grant money because it's one-time money, okay? And so, but, we also know that when we are understaffed and there is such a benefit to students that we need to gradually be thoughtful about how we might move positions from a grant-related position to the regular-day budget. Our adjustment counselors are examples of that. Last year, those two positions, again, were grant-funded through COVID-related funds. Now, we are recommending in this budget that they are becoming part of the regular school budget. And in regard to the special education piece, please, I feel like we can't say this enough. This goes back to us needing to invest in our programming so that we can keep kids in district. And even if kids needed to go out, there are programs that don't exist anymore to send students to. So we're gonna need to create it one way or another. And we're really trying to be prudent in all of our financial decisions. So, and this is one way that we're thinking about being prudent in regard to our financial decisions. The 4.99% that Christine shared does not include these four positions. So we are looking at continuing to keep our custodians and our two-float nurse positions in a grant-related window and funding them for one year to think about if we need them next year, we might be able to move them into the regular-day budget. But that's what we're looking at. We are gonna make a proposal separately to, we're gonna share this with FinCom, and we're gonna share this with Town Council. We are proposing that these four positions, to the tune of $300,000, are funded by the town's ARPA grant. And this is a point of conversation that we've discussed at our Finance and Facilities Subcommittee meeting. I know that this is important to Suzie. And her position is, you know, how might the town be using ARPA funds to support schools? And we think this is just a terrific way for them to do that. It's, again, $300,000. And we, I think, would like to work with them collaboratively over not just next year, but the next few years to possibly taper this to maybe do 300,000, 200,000, and then 100,000. So the total ask from ARPA would be 600,000 plus a restocking of the stabilization or refinancing of the stabilization fund using ARPA as well. More to follow on that.
So I just thought it was important that we talk about the Chapter 70 money. Because for fiscal '23, it's always the fourth Wednesday of January that the governor comes out with their budget. And in the governor's budget, there's always a projection for what Chapter 70 is gonna look like. Now, we know, as the budget progresses with the House and the Senate, that could also fluctuate. But the first go-ahead for Wakefield is pretty positive that it looks like it's a little over 14.5% increase from '22 to '23 for Chapter 70 funding. And we know that that becomes part of the larger town budget, but it also helps to support funding for the schools. So I just thought it'd be good to clarify what that means for us.
I can jump in on this slide. So Rosie Galvin, our special ed director, has worked really closely with our team on specifically the special education portion of the budget. And I'd just like to share that I think she's done a great job with program analysis across the district, looking, pulling student information, really digging in to try to figure out, you know, where we're strong and where we need improvement and kind of using that information to help guide our decisions. So we've talked at length with her about this. So some of the priorities in special education are, you know, as we've talked about, expanding and refining district programs. And what that really means is to have that consistency. I think for a student to go out of district, that's a huge decision on a family's end as well as a district's end. And we want to, at a minimum, start to have more consistent programming, level-to-level, to give parents that sense of safety, that services will remain consistent, level-to-level, and programming will remain consistent as well, especially for our more specialized groups. So that's definitely something that we have an eye on, just looking at that program development from pre-K through post. And then we've talked about this too, just the need to support extended school-year services. The standard in special education is, you know, are students going to substantially regress when they are away from school? And that's, I think, been more challenging during COVID, to say that they haven't. I think we've seen regression across the board. But in special education, I think we've seen that even more significantly. So we do want to continue to support robust extended school-year offerings and potentially some extended school day as well. The next piece is just around, you know, supplementing additional services. Really kind of digging into the evaluation process and keeping up with our referrals for special education and making sure that we're doing, you know, a really strong job related to special education eligibility, that we're identifying students appropriately and in a timely way. And then we're following that up with the correct or the right amount of service to help the students make progress. And then, you know, PD is another thing. I know Rosie herself has led some professional development this year across the district. That's another piece that we really want to dig into. Special education is so complex in terms of the different needs of our students across the district. You know, student profile to student profile, level-to-level, grade-to-grade. There's a lot of differences in terms of what special educators need for professional development. So we want to make sure that we're building capacity within the district and making sure that all of our special ed staff have access to training to help them build their skill set and better serve our students and families. So that's just a really, you know, that last bullet just identifies that need for ongoing PD, which changes every year based on the needs of our students.
Questions?
I just also want to say tomorrow, we'll have the slides. And we'll also have a copy of the budget book that you all have received up on our website. We also have copies in the office if anyone wants to come in and if they don't feel like printing all 64 pages, so they can come in and get a copy.
Mike?
I have four questions. Should I do them all at once, or do you want to? Okay. So the first one is, you talked about the SR3 relief funds, the 822 grand. Is the expectation you're gonna split that evenly between the next two years, or?
I don't know if it's.
It's not exactly, it's not even split, but we're gonna put some of our paraprofessionals on that.
Okay, so it might be close to 50/50, okay. I assume the current budget assumes we will continue to offer meals free? Is that correctly?
So it does not?
It does not, okay.
It does not.
Okay, good.
Is there, just on that, is there a deadline? Has the federal government said when that is going to end? Because I feel like they did, and then they like extend it and extend it. Is there an end date right now?
So Danielle Collins is part of the group that was petitioning that. The timeline that I was given, at first, they had hoped to have an answer for us in April. But then I was on a webinar, they're actually pushing it out to early June.
To have an answer?
To have an answer.
But it's going through the end of the school year, no matter?
This year, absolutely.
Okay, yeah, so they just don't, we just don't have an answer for next year?
We just don't know.
Yep.
But your assumption is based on?
Because last year, we had our summer feeding program. We don't know about that as well. But we're still waiting to find out for meals for next year.
Danielle already has a connection with the food pantry, but she should certainly contact them if the funding doesn't come up.
No, but to answer your question, Mike, this has pricing in here and it has the proposals for cost increases, of course, because as Doug said about supply chain, our food costs have gone up.
True.
And labor costs as well.
But the expectation is we won't bear the, we'll get some revenue.
Danielle has done some projections because right now, our participation rates have doubled because it's free. So we're trying to estimate what that would look like if it goes back to not.
Got it, okay, that's great, thanks. You talked about the transition of the ARPA positions. Well, this is actually a question. Those ARPA positions, so I imagine that a lot of their focus related to COVID. And now, in a post-COVID world, we talked about this a little. So how do we see their roles changing? If my assumption is correct, that they were primarily focused on COVID-related items before what their role would be like post-COVID?
It's a great question. I think in regard to our custodians, you know, you've heard Christine say, we have Connex boxes that are full of furniture still, right? So we have those furniture that need to be moved back into schools, right? So those boxes have to be emptied. Furniture has to be cleaned. We have different maintenance schedules and different maintenance that custodians are doing that they weren't doing two years ago. So just because of the way that we've changed our facilities, we feel like those two positions are really going to be critical and could, I don't know that they will. They could be part of a budget conversation, you know, a year from now or two years from now.
Sure, sure.
There are also help change filters, both in buildings and the air purifiers. And it's covering absences. It's covering, helping support facilities-related work during the week and on weekends as well.
Okay, good. And then my last question is, you talked about the Chapter 70 funding and at least tentatively, it's a 14.5% increase.
$997,000?
That was part of my question. And obviously, we wouldn't get all 997,000. It's whatever the town chose to give to us of the share they get. So my question is, if you had some portion, let's say it's half, I have no idea what the number is, what would be probably the first thing you would focus on if you had additional funding?
So, you know, I feel like if, that money has gone to the town, right? And so it's something that we look at. We appreciate that it's been increased. But if we're looking at refunding stabilization and getting a $600,000 commitment over a couple of years to fund positions or to taper positions in, so we might be able to have, to dampen the effect on our year-over-year percentage increases, right? For our budget that we might be asking for. I feel like if the town can support in those ways, I feel like we're gonna be, I think we're gonna be in a good space. If, you know, for example, I think the town would say, great, take the money, you take, we'll take your half of Chapter 70, or we'll give you $300,000 for Chapter 70, and we'll keep it from ARPA, right? And, you know, so I feel like it's, it's all coming from the same bank.
Yeah.
You know, the same space, right? We all work for the same brand. And I'll be honest with you, I feel like because our work has been so public and because we're communicating differently with FinCom and the town leadership, including Town Council, I know that they'll have questions. But I feel like we're in a collaborative space that's really effective, so. I think we're, the budget that we have planned is pretty aggressive.
Can I just jump in on the Chapter 70? Amy, Amy and Amy Purcell and I, Amy and Amy Purcell and I did a whole bunch of work on Chapter 70 research prior to COVID. And one of the things that I learned about Chapter 70 is it's really about kind of helping support the different populations or the special populations in the community, right? So it really, Chapter 70 funding is focused at our ELL, our special ed, our low-income families, right? And as your population in your community changes, your funding changes. And at the end of the day, 7 million, we're gonna get 7.8 million dollars in Chapter 70 funds. We're asking for 47 million, right? This is not like extra money. It really is, it's in line with, and there's a formula in how that kind of gets allocated based specifically on our enrollment and the makeup of our enrollment. And so you never want to look at that, even though you want to, and say, but we just got a 14% increase. Like, why don't we get to take that $900,000 and add that to our budget? Like, at the end of the day, that's not really how it works. And so we, I think we have to be careful. And I think the way that you just talked about it, Doug, was the right way to look at it. It's money that comes into the town. The town is allocating, hopefully, what we ask, the big number that we ask. And I think Christine shared this for perspective.
Exactly.
Right, not for like, how are we gonna get at our percentage? Because, Mike, to be honest, that was my initial reaction too. And then I reminded myself of kind of how this works.
It's really a financing mechanism for the town. Whether they have to borrow money or they get more Chapter 7 money determines how they're gonna get the money to support all the town.
It's how the state helps towns and cities fund education to make sure everyone has an adequate, what they deem to be an adequate level of education, also based on the demographics of that city or town and their ability to pay. So there is a complicated formula, like Suzie said. But it's just important to point out that, like Suzie said, because of the Student Opportunity Act, because of certain groups, that number has increased because of the population of the town of Wakefield. But also, one of your questions was about budget requests. There is a section of the book that talks about by school and by district-wide about certain requests. Now, we're not always able to fund all of their requests. And I know, Suzie, you had asked a question about it.
I would say you're never able to.
Never, of course. The requests were well over a million dollars in addition to contractual obligations. But we take that very seriously. Like Doug said, we looked at the tiers. What can we do this year? What can we look for next year? And it becomes part of a bigger conversation. But it's just, we're very transparent. And because those request pages were from our well-attended staff forums that we had with all schools, all staff was able to participate. It was also from our principals. So everyone in the district had a hand at part of this budget, of asking for something. But not everything, of course, could get funded in one year.
Yeah, I agree, thank you. Great job.
Yes, sir.
I read through the whole thing. You did a really nice job, thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna start, actually, where Michael just finished. Just want to thank you for, in the Budget Subcommittee, for all the work. you for, in the Budget Subcommittee, for all the work that goes into this. You look at the calendar of when it starts, and I've never had the privilege of being on that Subcommittee in the seven years I've been on here, but not consecutive. But it's a lot of work and great job, you know, I think, I think you were kidding when you asked if I had read it. And I said yes, because it was actually really clear. So and the presentation you all did was, was really, really good as well. So I definitely look forward to kind of diving into it even more, particularly with hearing, hearing some of the explanations. A question though, that I, two questions I do have. One was in talking about the budget proposal and the positions that we're suggesting for positions, we're for special education personnel. And if I understand, that's to, you know, increase our offerings, to hopefully have less families or students needing to access services outside of the town. The overall cost though, but the special education out-of-town tuitions didn't decrease. But maybe they're not so tightly connected. But I'm curious, if we continue to invest, would it be safe to assume, if we continue to invest internally, would that outside placement cost decline? Or is that not quite how it would work?
Well, we have contracts with those outside service providers and those costs go up every year. So it depends on potentially, some years we have students that age out and so you would see a slight decrease, but we also have some students every year that, you know, increase because of their severe needs. But yeah, you historically will see a year-over-year increase because of, just by nature of the contracts that we have with those providers.
Okay, so even, even investing internally, like you say, these four positions isn't always going to result in the outside placement cost going down?
Not in this budget.
Yeah.
But if two students or three students were to go out as a result of not increasing programming, then that would be an immediate cost to out of district and that would probably be triple the cost of the personnel. So there's an added, you know, it's, yes, it's adding more to the budget, bottom line, but it's like spending money to save money?
Yeah, yeah.
If that sounds reasonable?
It does, yeah. So in a way, yeah, that makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
In many ways, you're trying to get ahead of the possible need to send a student out if we can't support them well.
Right.
Inside the district.
I think it's more immediate than that. I don't, this is, these are not like nice-to-have future planning. Like this is, like we're going to need a program in two years. We're going to need a program in September at the middle level that we have at elementary that we don't have at the middle school.
That's two of the heads though.
Correct.
Two of the four. So it would be good for you to talk about that specifically.
Yeah, and so, so that's, that is two of the, of the four personnel. The third personnel, the third position, we're looking to kind of split and support a few elementary schools. More to follow on that, you know? And we're looking at the Doyle position is a position that we believe we might have in place at this point, so that, that might be, that might come off the table. But that is, if that person stays in a role, then that would be that position. Currently, we have someone in a role. If they were to move out of that role, or if the person were to leave the district, then we would need to fill that position. So that's why, because we, if we hire someone in a one-year position, right, it has to be represented in the budget if we need that position to operate the school. So that's why it's there.
I would just say a couple more words about the two heads, because we on the Subcommittee know what that's all about. Talk specifically about those two heads and what's happening there, or can you not?
Sure. I think, you know, so it's, so we have a program at one of our elementary schools. It's called our ASD program. And that program does not have a continuation at the middle level. And it needs to. We have students that are aging into the middle school where we need to be not just moderately prepared, we need to be providing the same or better services developmentally than they are getting at elementary school at the middle level. So that could include 1.5 of those two positions or two of those two positions. The other need is language-based services at the middle school level, which has been underfunded for the last three years. You know, initially, when I became superintendent four years ago, we had talked about developing a language-based sequence at the middle level where we would fund a new teacher every year. We pulled back from that because we thought that it was cost prohibitive and we had other priorities that we just needed to backfill. We're now at a point now, we need to kind of meet that commitment and that's what these four positions do.
Great, thank you.
And I don't want, Kara could fill us in.
No. Yeah, I think, I think you hit it. It really comes down to meeting the needs of students, compliance based on IEPs and the decisions made at the team level. So like Doug said, if you have a situation where you have this programming offered at the elementary and it's successful and the teams are saying, "These are what our kids need to access their education in Wakefield Public Schools," it's not really debatable. It's something that, you know, as a district, we're required to comply with and create that structure from level to level.
That's great. Now, thank you. Thank you for the, oh, go ahead. But thank you for that clarification. I mean, I'm entirely supportive of it, but I was curious if there was, investing now could later on result in savings later?
Yeah.
Oh, I just wanted you to spell the acronym. You called it the ASD program and not everyone would know what that is.
It's the Autism Spectrum Disorder Program.
It's only, that program right now is only at the Dolberg Elementary Schools.
Okay, interesting. And then my only other question is, when we looked at capital requests, I think I mentioned before, I kind of liked the A, the B, you know, the different levels. So what I'm curious, you can't fund everything, but if we were to have that, hey, maybe next year, this is what we'd be looking in, for those of us, that'll, that'll be here. What are maybe, is there something that we weren't able to do this time, or an area we weren't able to fund this time to the level we want to, that you think you could see on the horizon?
I think the budget survey speaks to that, because we listed our priorities on the budget survey and we asked the community, "You tell us what our top two should be." So definitely the top one that Doug pointed out are funded. Top two, the counselors are, but we couldn't, that top two, the top line is the Tier One. So definitely math intervention, the science, intervention services, digital learning specialists, and the custodial staff. Absolutely, that, we heard you loud and clear. So those are funded. Counselors and psychologists, that was the second one of the first question. Those are still the adjustment counselors. We were able to fund that as well. I know Kara has targeted in her budget, the reading and writing curriculum resources. So we're trying to meet the top two. The other items in the chart are other areas that we're trying to focus on, but we wouldn't be able to do all of this in fiscal 2023.
So, so to answer your question, or to add to what Christine is saying, Kevin, I think we can reformat and present this information like we do with capital. It might be easier to keep track of.
And to also just know which of these are in the budget and which aren't.
Yep.
Just even that's like a color coding.
Yep. Now, now this presentation, FinCom will not be really interested in 18 of these slides.
Right.
Not that they're not interested. They're always profoundly interested, but, you know, I think that they're going to want a little more, they want the math, right? They want to know what it is, how are we doing it, how are we funding it, what's the year-over-year strategy, you know, how are we making it work? So, and I think we're prepared to have a, it'll be a slightly different summary that we'll present on Thursday evening, but it will be same, same information. Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for your questions, Kevin. Amy?
Oh, I'll go next. So I'm always curious, every year, I go through the schools and I look at what they ask for.
Mm-hmm.
Because then you kind of know what the needs are at every school. And then when you, you kind of look, and it's a lot of nuns and the personnel changes. And consistently in the elementary schools, and this has come up in our Subcommittee meeting, is the math interventionalist. So where is that?
So those aren't actually FTEs.
Oh, okay.
The interventions is contracted service lines, and we funded that at all four elementary schools for next year.
So where would that be in this?
So if you go to their budget page, you would see that in their intervention line.
Previously was only K, fourth grade, I believe, is that for this year? And they don't have it, the math intervention in particular for the eighth grade, because they couldn't get instructors for it?
So we're focusing on math intervention, yes.
So now they're going to do it, you're going to do it in all the elementary schools, K through four, and then obviously going to still try to get the eighth grade going as well. Is that there?
You can see it's under 2330 is the DESI function code.
Okay.
And it says intervention line, and all four elementary schools was increased by $8,000. So.
So that's that.
Yeah, so, but you'd see, these are the request pages and.
Yeah, that's, yeah, so this is all the requests and then back here is what they're actually got. All right, so everyone got the intervention?
So the budget sheets, I thought it'd be important, so gives you two-year of the actual data of what was actually spent, the current budget, which is 22, and the proposed for next year. So you see a year-over-year trend of how schools are actually spending their money. But yeah, we heard that loud and clear, Amy, from all four schools, from not only the principals, from the staff forums, that they really were requesting math intervention services.
And the only thing I saw the high school asked for, and again, this has come up in more than one meeting, is their math skills. Is that in the budget or?
So that came up in the staff forum, that the special ed department was asking for an additional staff member to help support some math skills. So Kara and Amy McLeod are actually looking at current staffing levels, so we think we can actually address that with current staffing, so it wasn't an increase.
Okay. It also came up when Amy gave her presentation on the catalog.
Right, right, exactly. But her other request was, of course, the adjustment counselor, because we knew, once we built that at both the middle and elementary, that it was well-received. So we were able to keep those two positions.
I just want to recap, because I didn't write it down. The four special education teachers, I heard one and a half to two FTEs are for the Galvin.
So two, two are scheduled for Galvin.
Okay.
One at elementary.
And that was for what?
We, we don't, so we're looking at staffing and IEPs and the growth at each elementary. So that, that position is.
Is it a placeholder?
It's not a placeholder, but it's likely going to be, you know, .5, .2, .3.
Oh.
Right? And so we're still working, we're still working on that. There'll be more information on that at elementary. But those are commitments that we're looking to fill. And the other, the fourth is at Doyle.
And it's different than this FTE parent?
Yes, yes.
It's different than the one-to-one?
Correct.
Okay.
The one-to-one isn't covered under special education?
It is.
Okay.
It's just called out because it's a one-to-one?
Well, the special ed personality of a teacher.
Teacher is different than parent.
All right, so this is a teacher. Okay, gotcha. So we think that's Doyle.
Yep.
And, okay.
Right.
The elementary is going to be one, possibly one FTE floating at the different schools? Or you might hire part-time?
No, I think we, we won't be, I think we will be looking to increase people that may be part-time now, Amy.
Oh, okay.
Because you're right, Amy, we heard from the Greenwood and the Walton about an increased request. So Kara, Doug and Rosie are kind of looking at what that would actually look like and how if one FTE was going to, you know, work between locations or.
But what dictates the FTE is the student need.
Exactly.
Right.
Right? So, so what we need to do is create a kind of a check and balance based on IEPs and service grids to substantiate that need. And we think that we're, we're probably 70% there at this point. I think in the next five weeks, we're going to know more about elementary schedules and kind of what our needs are there.
And I'd just like to point out, so this, this has been like an ongoing conversation. The budget starts, the conversation really starts in early December. That's when we start meeting with, with staff. And so requests evolve over time. So, and as you'll, you'll see, so this is a proposal, but again, it gives the principals some flexibility within their lines as their year adjusts. They might want to move some money out of textbooks to instructional supplies. And ed reform has allowed schools to have that flexibility within their bottom line of their school. I just thought it would be important for you to, to point out that it's not so rigid that once we approve that, that's forever set in stone. You'll, you'll notice every year I bring budget transfers at the end of year, as things have, maybe a position wasn't filled, maybe somebody left at a higher level and there's some salary savings. So we're able to move that around as the year goes, goes through.
So you can move from tierals to employee, like employees line items?
So we, we only allow schools to move their non-salary lines, because we want to make sure that if, if sometimes we have to hire, if someone leaves, we have to hire higher than that person was making, if someone is applying that has more experience than that person leaving. So we never want to move the salary lines that are, and cut it too short.
What if it's a contract employee? You could do it in that case.
So contracted, we have a little bit more flexibility with contracted services. But as you'll see, we had to increase that line in the SHU's budget because we weren't able to fill some roles. And so we had to contract out for some testing and assessment.
But that's also not a salary line.
Right, right.
Can I just ask a quick question about the interventionist line? I noticed when you guys just called this out. So I had noticed it the other day, that it was $8,000 per school. What I hadn't realized at the, at the time was the percentage of budget that that kind of reflects. And what I also didn't notice is that the line item is different school to school, right? So $8,000 as a, as a line item or an amount is not as meaningful at the Woodville and the Dolberg as it is at the Walton and the Greenwood because of percentages. I think we should maybe rethink that being a percentage increase versus a lump sum, because I would, unless you guys had figured that out based on need, but it seems to me you've got more students at the bigger schools and that you could probably, we'd be better suited to think about that from a percentage than a lump sum.
Well, it wasn't an arbitrary number. We did discuss it with the, with the principals because they had contracted people that they were working with now.
Mm-hmm.
And so we knew what the hourly rate was and we asked them about scheduling, because it had to fit in their schedule as well, about how many hours they could provide. But we can absolutely ask them again. But that was definitely, that number came out of a conversation between Doug and I.
With the principals.
With the principals.
Okay.
These are the amounts that they've asked for.
Christine, I think, because Val Dreyer just came.
They'll be excited about your idea though.
Val Dreyer.
Some will be.
We'll hear about it tomorrow.
Some will be.
Val Dreyer just came to Student Services last, so she talked a lot about this. So I think this, the expectation is it's three hours a day, four days a week is the intent.
Oh, right. I was reading that in the notes, in the Subcommittee notes.
Yeah, approximately.
Since I'm speaking, I was going to wait till last, but since I'm going. So on the interventionist line and the topic of that and the, the whole topic of learning loss, right? So I, I think we talk about intervention, I believe, we talk about interventionists in, in the general ed population of trying to kind of support learning loss. There's special, kids that get special ed support. And then there's kind of this intervention line that we're using to kind of try to, to get kids back on track that, that may have gotten off track during COVID. I'm surprised, one, that that number, that those numbers aren't higher. I'm surprised that we're not asking for those to be ARPA-funded, because at the very, we hope that this is a short, a short-term problem, which I know it's not going to go away in a year. But I guess I would have hoped to have seen those kinds of funds pulled out and, and at least brought forward to the town as ARPA-funded. That ARPA bucket is a big bucket. And I know, you know, you guys didn't put a number on the stabilization refunding or replenishing that you're talking about, but you know.
We do have a number on that.
Okay, what is that number?
$230,000.
Okay, so you want to replenish the 230 that we took out last year and get it back up to, okay. So you're looking for that 230 plus the, the four heads.
Over three years.
Over three years, right.
Right, so that, so the, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I guess, I guess I would just like to see us be a little bit more, particularly in the things that we think are addressing COVID needs, more explicit in our ask around ARPA funds. Because I know different towns are handling it differently, you know, larger towns allocate, you know, a portion of the money over to the schools and to spend. That's not what's happening here in Wakefield, which is fine. But I think we could make a pretty compelling argument that there are certain line items in our budget that could be, could fall into ARPA very nicely. that there are certain line items in our budget that could be, could fall into ARPA very nicely. And so I'll, I'll stop with that statement. My, my last question is around the, um, the sixty-nine thousand dollars at the Galvin for math skills and ELA skills, which did not get funded. So that was a, a specific request that, um, that to me, again, falls nicely into this situation that could be intervention, and I don't know the particulars of that, right? So I don't, I don't know why.
I think that was actually at the high school, not the Galvin.
Yeah, it's the high school.
Yeah.
Oh, was it at that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Oh, so that's the one that you were talking about? That you guys think you're gonna be able to fund, to, to support that with current staff?
Yes.
So it's math skills and ELA skills at the high school?
Cause I... That was brought up, yes, at the staff forum, uh, by the special ed department. It was on the budget request sheet. So it's on the red sheet. It's not on the blue sheets because it didn't get funded in this request. So we're hoping to, to work on the schedule with the current staffing to make that happen.
Yep, okay, now, yep, I'm seeing it on the high school red sheet, you're right. It says math skills slash ELA skills block. Okay. Perfect.
So I, I guess as far as process, the hi, the high school put it on here, but now we're saying maybe we can, not we, they, are saying that they may be able to cover it with current headcount. See, I support this line item, especially given the learning loss. And I feel like we're, we're now gonna maybe do interventionists at the younger grade to bring them up. But these kids sitting at the high school didn't get that support. And we have new math curriculum. So I kinda wish, if anything, that got funded.
So, but, but if we can cover that with current funding, with current staffing, would you propose that we do it differently?
I, I would have, I guess I would want a conversation with the instructional leadership team, maybe?
I think, I think it's coming down to just looking at everything and, and looking at, you know, starting with who are our students, what do they need? You know, what, who, who would actually be eligible for something like this? How are we supporting our classes? You know, we're looking at the high school in particular, just across the board. And, you know, our co-taught structures, our schedules, our student groupings. And it's all just kind of fleshing out that, and I think just, like I said, Rosie's doing a deep dive analysis across the district of special ed staffing and placement and, and just trying to go from a really student IEP-driven approach. Kinda like what Doug was talking about, the elementary too. Like where that teacher goes is gonna be dependent on the IEP's service delivery grids of the students. And it's really gonna be backed by what students need. So I, yeah, I don't want it to be looked at that we don't think that that's a need. But it's a matter of like, do we have existing, if we, if we look at scheduling differently and we, and we start with what do students need, what are they being recommended for? Grouping students with similar needs together and then staffing accordingly, we feel like we, we can do that work with existing staffing. And those conversations have been, they've started. We've had, we've had multiple conversations at this point with the high school ILT, with administration, with special ed staff, smaller conversations. So it's a work in progress, but we're just kind of looking overall at our structure at the high school and how it's meeting the needs of students.
So that particular line item is a, is a special ed ask, not a, um, a gen ed, general ed?
I'm thinking of it like that, cause I feel like that when, when they've asked for math skills, it's, it's looking for additional, either preview, review, additional math support.
Okay.
Is that fair? Christine, tell me if I'm wrong. That's, that's where it came out, at the staff forum. And then it evolved into a conversation with you and the, the school administration team. So that's why we're trying to think strategically about how we can get the most bang for your buck. We're trying to see what we have now, can we reallocate, move some things? And so, so that we can be confident about what we're asking for next year is also helping us move forward. We would love to fund everything right away, but that would not be responsible. It would not be sustainable. So I just wanna stress that. But I, I do like that we present those pages. I hadn't seen it in my prior district done that way. But it's very transparent. But this is, this is, we, we, for the past month, Doug and I and Kara have been asking, what do you, what do people want? What do you think we should be focusing on? So this is a real targeted response to that. This is what was asked and this is a, a year-over-year response to as many requests as we could possibly fund.
So Christine, again, from a formatting perspective, it might be kind of interesting in the future for those pages where it looks like you can't support it financially, to be able to mark in some way like, this is actually green, even though it's sitting over to the right, not getting funded, we actually think we can support this ask.
Okay.
Because I think it's, it will be misleading for people who read the book, right? To think, oh, that these were all, and, and I know in a number of my questions that I asked you, there was kind of an explanation as to like, why, why it looks unfunded if you don't exactly know that, the way that the chart is built.
Right.
So it's just something to think about to, you know, to even be able to say, like, there's a couple of these things that we're actually able to fund just organically by re-looking at our staffing and all of those things versus having to put the dollars at it that don't show up in the, in the chart. It's just something to think about.
And it doesn't mean it's happening right now. We're, we're working towards having these things happen. But it's also, this proposal is what we're asking for to fund for next year's budget and here are the reasons why. But absolutely.
If I could add to that, I would, I would add on to Suzie's question, but the, and, and even following on Amy's. You know, we start, right, even at the finance subcommittee level in, in listening and getting information from a real, sort of macro view, right? We ask the department heads and the building principals to present almost a laundry list of, of needs. And then we sort of begin to back them off that about, okay, with, with a deeper assessment over existing staff, developing, you know, changes within the student demographic, you know, ELL changes, special ed changes, how can, how can these needs be potentially met by, by, by reorganizing the staff, even reassigning staff? We talk about that in, in labor negotiations all the time, about the reassignment of, of existing positions to meet the needs of, of the building, which doesn't necessarily add to the budget per se, other than the, the annual, you know, salary increases. And I think that, I think that's really the first important step that we see. And, you know, we've been including in the budget book for years what the, what the asks have been for the very reasons that we're talking about them now. We wanna be able to show, one, we wanna be able to show that we're not, that we're taking a real, a strong look and deep look at all the needs of the bill of, of the district. And we're also taking a, a responsible approach to assignment and reassignment based on student assessment needs. And we're being responsible with the available resources that the town has to support us. So I think, I think showing the, the asks are, are an important part of that as opposed to just, and we've been doing that for, for some time now. Whether we can improve the presentation of that, sure, I mean, we can always improve, right? We can, but I think we get better at what we're doing every year because of, you know, good conversations like, I like this one. So I think it's important just to note that we started the macro view back in, oh, it's the first calendar date. I don't even remember, we started this conversation on like November.
I think just two quick questions. I notice under what we know and, like, we're looking at sort of redoing the, the student management software. Is that called out?
Yes.
Under...
So it's in the district wide page?
Yeah, that's, I think, what I was looking for.
So we're able to make the initial investment now? Because we have to start now? It'll take six months to get the new system up and rolling. It's PowerSchool that we invested in. But we had to, for early fall, we had to invest in extra implementation days, extra training days that were hoping to happen over August for all of our staff. And we still have to invest in IPASS, our current system. So that's also represented in the district-wide pages. I think it's under the IT department.
So it's, is it the twenty-five thousand dollar increase in software, I think?
That's it?
Yeah.
It's that, but then there's also, isn't there a professional services line item?
For the training, right.
Cause this is a crossover.
I've written software on page fifty, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Cut that.
Yep.
Cause we'll be running both.
We'll be running both for, for a while, right.
And the student management system, if you remember, was one of our goals that we highlighted back in August.
Yeah.
Right? Intervention services, one of the goals we highlighted back in August. Lengthening the, looking horizontally and vertically at services for kids was one of our goals back in August, right?
In terms, in terms of the student management, how long are we gonna have to run them sort of in parallel?
I think a year.
So the timeline isn't well-defined yet because it, the project literally just got kicked off like a week ago. So we're hoping to have, unfortunately, they're gonna have to do the schedules in IPASS now for next year. But they're hoping to only have to run IPASS maybe the first three months of school.
Okay. Are we gonna have to, is there a license fee?
Yeah, so we still have to continue our contract with IPASS. So right now we're overlapping both.
But so we're hoping that that only happens for a year?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
I think my second question is just, it looks like we decreased the ELL professional salary. Did, did I...
District-wide, because that was also moved to the high school.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, so it came out of district and it's now being funded at that level?
At one of the schools.
Okay.
One other question I meant to ask you, I'm sorry, I didn't. So of the increase, of the four-point-nine-nine percent increase, I love this statistic, I remember last year, what portion of that four-point-nine-nine is, is driven by contractually obligated expenses?
So that's the page that everyone loves. I think it's page twenty-four.
It is, it's my favorite page.
You know, it's probably FinCon's favorite page. So it breaks down the year-over-year increases. And I think I've highlighted it in yellow.
Twenty...
Twenty-one.
There it is, thank you. This is my favorite page in the whole thing too.
It's...
It's contractual obligations and new positions.
Yes.
Yeah, but the new positions are about eight-hundred grand of the total. So if you can calculate that, my phone, we're working on it.
Right, but you have to understand that those also replace four positions that are sunsetting.
Yep.
So this is the overall increase from twenty-two to twenty-three. Personnel alone was about three, almost three-point-four percent.
Yep.
Which doesn't give us a lot of other, you'll see, we say it every year, we are a customer service, but we are personnel, industry, so...
One percent of our budget, Michael, is four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
So if we're at three-point-two with contractual obligations, right, it's less than one percent. So, you know, you do the math there, it doesn't give us much latitude.
Yep, yep.
A one-point-six percent increase for all of our non-salary-related increases.
Yep. Thank you.
Certainly.
But also, this budget is an all-funds budget too, that, to keep that in mind. So this includes grants, it includes revolving accounts, it includes food services. It also includes circuit breaker money, which helps support our outer district tuitions. So that, you know, circuit breaker, we're fortunate, the state has been funding that probably at seventy to, maybe sixty-eight to seventy percent year-over-year to help fund our over three million dollars of outer district tuition costs. So it's, it's not just what we're asking the town of Wakefield to support, it's what all of the revenue into Wakefield is supporting as well.
Yeah, just, just a couple. Again, wanted to start really with an appreciation to Doug and Christine. This has been, obviously, a, you know, you have to love this work in, in order, in order to get us, you know, this far. It is a tremendous amount of very tedious and strategic thinking and, and really team-building work. So I know from, as a member of the finance subcommittee, just being, you know, with you guys, you know, every other Thursday and then a couple Thursdays in a row, it has been, it, it really has been a, a professional effort and I, I thank you very much for all of that. And of course, your, your staffs back in the office, who are, who are churning and making the math happen too. So it's really, thank you for, for, for this again. A couple, a couple of things. I was pleased, I guess, just to say these, although I know it from our conversations at the subcommittee level, but pleased to see the science teachers, you know, coming forward. I appreciate the, the necessity around not doing that the last couple of years with our COVID fiasco. Now, you know, in twenty-twenty and, and, and last year and the, and the impact on that and needing to shift priorities and redo things in a different way. But I'm really pleased to, to see that coming back. I think, you know, that is a, is a, not only an obligation, we refer to it as an obligation, but as importantly, if not more importantly, it is really the tremendously right thing to do. When we had these conversations back in fiscal nineteen about the, the need for four, you know, science teachers at the elementary level, the need was very real then. And so be able to see this come to fruition, you know, you know, four years later, but two of those years COVID, so there's an asterisk next to those years. But, but I'm really pleased to, to see that back in the mix. And I think our, our elementary kids will, will really benefit, will really benefit there. The, uh, the special education supports that, that, that continue, I think are, are obviously important. They are necessary as we balance the, balance the, the, the evolving needs of, of students. I think one of the things that, that has been identified, at least from a budget perspective, I'm sure Student Services talk about it in far greater detail than we do, but I think it's important to say that some of those needs are still evolving. We probably don't know what they're, what, we don't know what they're all going to be yet. So this continues to be our, our best, our best estimate at, at the student population that we presently have and some, probably some crisp projections. But nonetheless, I think it's important to say to the community that this is a, that the, that those, those are, those needs are still evolving and we're paying pretty, pretty tight attention to them. I'm sure you guys, I know you guys, that, that Student Services are and, and we are as well at that, that, the budget subcommittee. So that's another nice place that there, there's some synergy there. One of the things that came out of, of our meeting on February ninth that we had at the Galvin with the teacher, our union leadership, which I think is nicely represented here as well, was concerns that they brought forward, or suggestions that they brought forward about the need to see greater direct academic services. Certainly, you know, we needed to adjust and swing things differently to support more counseling, social, emotional types of needs that were, that were front and center during COVID. Right, we didn't, we, and, and that was entirely appropriate. But now the educators, the, the, the teacher leaders shared with us concerns they're now seeing about some of the academic supports that are, that are, that we can't drop off from the social, emotional and counseling supports, but we really need to add more direct. I think we're certainly represented in the surveys. But again, very, very pleased to see that it is, you know, it is well-represented here. There's a strong consensus around the, the, the math and the ELL academic support. So, so certainly pleased to, I, I'd see that come to be as well. A question I had, and, and we didn't really talk about it probably because it was unnecessary, but I want, I had a couple of questions on enrollment projections. At the bottom line, you're, we're projecting a, a negligible change in enrollment, down four students district-wide. But I'd like you, you could share, you could share your, your thoughts and confidence around what early registrations, very early, or even projections may be about Doyle and kindergarten. And, and how comfortable are we that these, these classroom sizes and these numbers of classes are, 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 will suit us enough?
So our, our Doyle numbers are particularly strong?
Yeah.
You know, that, that registration is done? We're looking at, right now, you know, now that, that registration is done at Doyle, we're looking at a few different kind of models, right? In regard to nine classrooms, ten classrooms, how do we best manage class size? We're also trying to look thoughtfully at maybe creating a pilot for students that have needs that aren't quite ready for kindergarten yet, you know. So there's a, we have a number of irons in the fire there. But I think in terms of numbers at Doyle, I think that they're very strong and very reliable. In terms of kindergarten, I think Kara might be able to...
We do have the projection numbers from the early registration numbers on the sheet.
Yes.
Again, they're, they're just projections at this point, from what the registration numbers have shown. We worked with Linda Maldani in central office was helping, along with some, the principals were able to... We worked with Linda Maldani in central office, was helping along with some, the principals were able to help us come up with these numbers. But these are actual registration numbers for kindergarten.
So, those are the numbers for registrations that we have now?
So far.
Or there's a little, there's, there's some built-in? How much growth, okay, so those are numbers for kindergarten that we have now, what do we think we could grow to?
Well, the class sizes.
Those are pretty big class sizes for, for the little guys.
Right. Well, the class sizes are, are kind of directed by policy, right?
Indeed.
And so, ideally, we'd love to keep the class sizes as small as possible, while also acknowledging that, you know, in, in our smaller schools, for example, we just can't, we don't have additional classrooms to just create another classroom that we might be able to carry.
It's a space thing, too.
Because when we create another class in K, you know, the numbers in 1 are 25 and not 22. So, but we, we want to be thoughtful about how that, that projects as well. So, I, I think it's different at different schools right now, but I, I think the numbers look good. And they always change a little bit.
Right.
As we move into June.
Right.
So, I, I think that's, I, I think where we are now, I think is, is safe space, but I think more to follow here in June, you know? If you look at Woodville, you know, you know, that, that's something that, that is worth. You know, each school has, each school has its challenges, and each school has its kind of areas where they have a little bit of space in regard to classrooms. But, you know, that, and that's why a few years ago, if you remember, kids used to just be hard-scheduled into one, one school, one district, right? And now, we created kind of the buffer zones.
Correct.
Where you could be districted to Woodville or Dolbear, depending on where you live. And so, that, that has kind of created some opportunity for us, too.
And, and the, just to point out, the bubble classroom at Woodville would be moving from.
One to two?
One to two. Yep.
Yeah.
Something going on at that class.
Sure, and that will continue each year?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, no, I, I was, my question had really was around the confidence level that what do we think kindergarten enrollment might, might do? Since we're really only at March 1st. I know registrations have been going on for a while, but my point isn't that you don't have good numbers here. My point is that we've still got some.
Yeah.
Some space ahead of us for kindergarten registration.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we've tried to just tighten up the process a lot more in the last couple of years to, in, in parents really turn out for kindergarten registration. But you're right, there's always the move-in possibilities. So, what Linda and I will do the next couple of months and then work with the building secretaries is to really look at the addresses, build up the class sizes with an eye on number for kindergarten, not, not exceeding that kindergarten class size number. That's really what drives a lot of that. And, you know, Philip, it's usually Philip Walton in Greenwood, and then a lot of the buffer zones are, are Woodville-Dolbear split. We do have some Greenwood-Woodville splits, too. But we try to, you know, we try to be thoughtful about the buffer zones, too, like keeping kids in neighborhoods together and not having like all the kids in the buffer zone go to one school and then one other, you know? So, we really, it is a process that we, we put a lot of thought into, and we get it pretty close to final. Because we, our, our goal is to have before our, our March 24th kindergarten information night to get to parents their assignment, because they're anxious about it. I think a lot of parents, you know, really want to know, like, you know, especially, we, we always prioritize siblings, you know, keeping families together. So, there's a lot that goes into it, but it's really driven by the class size numbers. So, I think we're, I think we're, you know, I, I do think it's a safe production, give or take some summer, spring/summer move-ins that we usually are able to handle.
We're also welcoming some families back, right, that have been homeschooling for the past few years, and it's a pleasure to have them back. And we have some parents that have also brought their children back from private school as well. So, it's, yeah, so we're pleased, pleased to do that. Our numbers are good.
Indeed, they are.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sure.
I suppose, now I'm trying to reconcile these four special education teachers still. Because on the district-wide, they're funded here, four. But when you go through the individual schools, there's another .5 at the Doyle, a one at Dolbear, .5 at Greenwood, and one at Galvin.
For requests.
There, there's money on the blue pages, so I wasn't sure.
So, the blue pages, we, we propose four specialized positions.
Yep.
And we haven't allocated them out to schools yet. As Doug said, we're anticipating possibly two at the Galvin.
Oh, so this is your allocation, even though there's money there?
What do you mean, there's money there?
There's like.
That, that, that's a fiscal '22 budget column that you're in.
Oh, I see. So, okay.
That's now. We're in '22 now.
Okay. Sorry.
That's fine, that's perfect.
And then, then maybe I'm reading the, the other question I had was the, so, so just, there's no COVID teachers next year?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
All right.
You set?
Yeah, sorry. Thank you.
Again, call me at any time with more questions. I know you're gonna.
Read your books every night and you'll have more questions. And I look forward to our discussion.
If you can't see our smiling faces, but we're smiling.
So, that's it for, for our presentation?
I don't have, um, thank you.
Certainly.
Thank you for good work.
Certainly.
Um, I do not have any comments tonight, so I'm gonna pass it off to you.
Sure. So, the only other topics that we had, we had calendar. That was on our agenda. So, we've already talked about masks. Calendar is, is the last. We do know now that the primary date is September 6th. So, because that is the primary date, I think we had taught, we had proposed two calendars, like with a Plan A and a Plan B. I think, you know, we're going with, I, I think we would recommend, the administration would recommend a Plan B, staying away from September 6th as a first day. And, and kind of would like to make a motion or pass that off for a school committee member to make a motion to accept the calendar, so that we can share that with families and they can plan their summers and, and kind of get to it.
Sure. For the sake of, of the discussion, I'll make the, the motion. I move the school committee approve the Wakefield Public School '22-'23 school calendar with a start date of Wednesday, September 7, 2022, and amend the date of Monday, October 10, to read Columbus Day slash Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion.
I liked the option of starting the day after Labor Day. So, I just won't, so I just don't vote for the B. Is that right?
That is right.
Okay.
So, I think, I, I think it has to be said that the, the union had requested that we go with Tuesday, right? And so, there, I think there's been some discussion and debate about whether we should be modifying our calendar in, in, to take into consideration election days, right? When the town made the decision to centralize Election Day, or elections at the Galvin, I don't know how much the school committee was involved in that decision. I don't think I was at the table at the time. But the reality is that the town decided to centralize voting in our school, and that the expectation was that that would not interrupt, interrupt education. I don't think anyone ever, well, I don't know if anybody specifically thought about primary running into the first day of school. Because I think we all could say, if any of us have dropped off at the Galvin, it's bad enough on a normal day to drop off your kids at the Galvin. It's bad on the first day, because there's a whole lot of parents who've never done it before, and now you're going to add voters. So, for me, while I appreciate the union's perspective on this and the feeling that we should not let Voting Day kind of interrupt education, I do worry about managing that as a first day of school for parents and kids and, and voters. I think everybody involved will be frustrated. And so, I, I'm in support of starting on Wednesday. I don't know if anybody else has any comments?
My comments were more, the parents that I spoke to preferred the Tuesday, because they want to get out earlier in June. And there's, is, are they gonna offer Wakefield Academy on that Tuesday? Because there's, we have teachers that live in Wakefield that work in other districts that might be going back on the Tuesday as well. So, that's, that, I was more doing a parent feedback.
And it's funny, Amy, when I first ran, I was, I used to yell and scream about that, those few days of starting and what it does for working parents, because there are, there is no camp, right? There isn't any kind of daycare available for parents who work after Labor Day. So, that is the other, the other kind of side of this coin.
Yep.
Of, um, starting on Tuesday does, does end up being kind of more convenient for, for sure, for working parents, because it is very difficult to get childcare on that, on that particular day and that week.
So, every time we talk about calendar, I just, I have to say this. Every time we talk about calendar, we get into the conversation of the contract language. It says if it falls on the 6th, the 7th, and the 8th, we can start, if Labor Day falls on the 6th, the 7th, or the 8th, we can start the week before, but not before the 1st, right? So, we could start the week before. Historically, we've given off Fridays to have a four-day weekend. You know, contractually, is that a day that we could work? We could. Past practice has been to give that day. So, no matter what decision we make here, you know, there's, there's a group of parents that feel like we would like to come back after Labor Day, please. Please, right? Like, make that happen for us. There are others, parents that say like, please, you know, because there's no offerings for camps or anything that late in the summer for working parents, please, let's get it going, get it going as early as possible. Plus, if we get in early, we get out earlier. And so, you know, all of those things are true. All of those things are true. I think, you know, the choice that the teachers want to advocate to start on the 6th, I think was, I don't think that we knew at that time. I know we didn't know at that time.
We didn't know.
Um, that, that, that there was going to be a primary on that day. We had discussed, what if? You know, and I felt, and I think some of the teacher leaders felt like, we can do it. But that's from their perspective, not from the perspective of parents. Or, you know, if, if a primary would be a significant voting day, we would cut that parking lot in half, some of our faculty and staff would be parking off-campus, so that people voting would be able to.
Park.
To park in spots that teachers normally park in on the first day of school. Plus, we have, you know, close to 300 new parents in grade five that are trying to negotiate, you know, a whole new, you know, changing from the middle school or, excuse me, the elementary schools that they were in, the very secure, you know, very secure in the elementary schools where they dropped off for, for four or five years. And now, they're going to the big middle school. And, and it's just, no matter what decision that we make, you know, I think it's 180 days, no matter how we slice it, right? So, and, so, for those reasons, I think, in taking feedback that we have, we presented two calendars early. And we've never done that before, by the way, presented two calendars. I thought, this is Kara's handiwork. And let's present two calendars. I was, I was very uncomfortable. But it was.
Just trying to present all the information.
It was, it was the right, it was the right proposal.
We ready for a vote?
Well, just chiming in, you know, Amy makes a terrific point. Doug, you've responded, I think, incredibly well to the, to the type of conversations that have been, you know, difficult about the planning first day of school for, for some time now. I mean, last year was particularly complicated. You know, we thought this year was going to be easy, right, compared to last year. Well, last year with, with, with the Jewish holidays and, and how, and where Labor Day landed and, and all of that sort of thing. And I think if we're going to have, if we're gonna have a conversation to potentially start classes before Labor Day, regardless of almost which day it is, and then have a conversation around what that Friday looks like, I think that's a conversation that we need to have much earlier in the year, as opposed to on the, the night or the night we're voting or a couple nights before we're voting. Because I think there's some big picture, it's almost like we need to have a, a community conversation around, around what that might, what parents might like to see, what staff might like to see. You know, the, the real calendar, right, meaning the world calendar is going to drive some of that decision-making around Jewish holidays and, and other, and other things that are happening. But at, at the end of the day, I think if we're going to make any substantive shifts around starting, you know, with students a day or two before Labor Day, and what that might look like on a, you know, Wednesday, Thursday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, with being off Friday, or whatever that is, I think that, that conversation should, should start a lot sooner than March. And that's not a criticism. I want to thank you guys for bringing this calendar. We were having this conversation last June, right, or May? So, this is, this is so much better, because we're that much, you know, much, much more ahead of the game. You know, with the state throw on the Labor Day, excuse me, the, the state primary, you know, there, the town has the prerogative as, to, to have the polling locations and the locations that they wanted. We weren't involved really whatsoever. We were kind of told. And, and that, you know, that's really that. I mean, we can revisit that if we think that there's any energy behind it. I'm not sure it's a hill worth climbing, frankly, but I think we do, just do the best we can to accommodate all, you know, all parties, right? I mean, one of the things that was, was said over and over again, when we were, when we were advocating the building of the Galvin, were parts of the, of the Galvin, including the gym and including the auditorium, were community use. We now can't say, well, you can't use it. The town spent, the taxpayers are still paying for this built beautiful school with the expectation that this could be a good community element of community use. Basketball and, and theater and all sorts of groups that are coming to use that space. I, I find it, I find me be hard-pressed to put, to push back on not, on not wanting the town to use it, if they so, if they so need for election purposes. But, so I, as I said, I made the motion, but I was happy to make the motion in support of the superintendent's, our recommendation. I think we gotta land on a square, and with plenty of notice, we'll be doing the best we can to let people know for planning.
We ready to vote?
Guys, I have a question. Sorry. Is it impossible to, I've never participated in drop-off at, at Galvin, so I'm, I'm literally looking for.
Isn't it an important qualifier, I think?
Yeah. I'm looking for perspective. Is it absolutely not possible to have a first day of school simultaneously with voting? I mean, I don't know. I'm asking.
My opinion is it would be difficult. It, it, I mean, it's possible, of course it is. People just need to know what's going on, right? So, you just need to message it really, really well. But it is, it's a mess down there on a normal, good day.
It depends what time you go. If you drop your kids off earlier, it's a nice day, they just hang out up front. We've never tried this before, so we can't say that it doesn't work.
Right. Oh, that, and that's totally fair, Amy. It's just, it's especially for brand-new parents that are fifth-grade parents that are doing it for the first time.
I, I think that's the issue. The problem is, it's the first day.
Oh, that's fine, but we're asking six other schools not to start because of the one school.
What, what I'm wondering is, I mean, could we be creative in messaging and videos and other things? You know, maybe open houses, like come in, I don't know who will host them, but come in before, like they do a mock drive-in, like.
There's a map that every parent gets. There's, there's already, like, when you're, there's, you get a lot of direction on how you should drop your kids off.
And it's still.
It's just, it's, it's, everybody comes into that one space. And you all figure out, like, over time, how your, like, your best drop-off is. But those first couple of days, when you're first doing it, it's, it's a little bit of a mess.
Normally, we have two professional development days. This year, we have one. Right? So, we, we've modified, and, I mean, we've worked with WEA. WEA gave us a list of things that they would like to see. And I think that we kind of said yes to absolutely everything that we felt like we could, and where we felt like there was a, a challenge, I think that's what led us to two calendars, right? And, and so, so, you know, I, I think my, if, if you're asking administration's thoughts on my proposal or my thoughts on this, I would suggest that we make the first day the week before. Right? And, and, and think, and not, and still give the 6th and not have the 6th be the first day. Right? And, and, and think, and not, and still give the sixth and not have the sixth be the first day. But that would still get us out early. It wouldn't crash into June.
Third calendar.
We talked about that, because there's still parking issues with staff and, right, is the staff
It's, it's, right, so, so, we, again, we've, I, I think that, you know, um,
You guys have looked at all the options.
I believe that we have. I believe that we have. And, and so, I think the, really the only alternative, and I hear, I hear all the points about the other schools. Um, we, you know, we've talked about taking schools out of sync. When we built the addition on Walton, we had schools that were out of sync in regard to the calendar, because Walton started a little bit later than the other schools. So we could say, we've done things like that in the past. Could we do it? Sure. Um, is it the best way to manage the school district? I think that's, I don't think it is. Um, you know, so.
Personally, I'm fine wherever we land.
All right.
I, I would just think about it, so. Um, so I look at the, the beginning date, and I think initially I was like, let's start on the first day we can, the sixth. And to Amy's point, like, it's, we've never done this before. We could probably do this really well. Like, we, we would just, you know, we'd be really good informationally. We would have people out there in the parking lots directing folks and, and hopefully, you know, we, we pull up. Um, but then when I look at the calendar and I think of, I think, I think where we start, it really ends up being where we end is what people look at. When are we going to be done with school, right?
That's exactly, this is exactly what the challenge is.
And then, so, when I look at that and I go, if we start on six, yeah, the end of the calendar looks attractive, because like, the last day of school is on a Friday, and then you don't have to, like, you don't have to, yeah, worry about Juneteenth, then coming back for a half-day Tuesday, like, who wants to do that? But then we live in New England and we're going to have a snow day. And we're, we'll probably have two snow days. You know, just play the odds. So my thought is, then I start to worry less about the end of the, because I just think our last day of school is going to be in that week, after Juneteenth, somewhere. Um, and whether it's the, the Tuesday, or the Wednesday, or the Thursday, um, I think it's going to land somewhere in there. And so that all of a sudden starts to make we, we should start as early as possible, less important to me, if the other, you know, determining factor is that the, the parents that use the Galvin on that day, if it wasn't, like we say, if it wasn't the first day of school, if it was the next week or two weeks later, this wouldn't be a discussion. We wouldn't even be thinking about it. But I think it is that, that confusion that comes, sort of with that, and everything that, I, I live on Richardson. I, I have no horse in this race. My kids would walk to school. I will walk to vote. Um, but I do interface with that intersection, like, almost every morning. So I know exactly what is, yeah. Um, so I, I think it makes some sense to sort of just hold it off that, that one day, and then thinking that uh, the end of the year is just, I think it's going to land somewhere in that week.
All right, we ready to vote?
I'm just curious if, like, people change their mind during the discussion piece.
You mean?
Yeah, I just wasn't sure, yeah, like, yeah, when we go, yeah, I'm just, I don't know.
That's a great question. That'd be exciting.
We should take a pretext.
Take a straw poll. If the sixth were going to be the day, why might you vote?
On the way in, we just put tickets in the barrel.
All right, ready to vote?
All right.
All right.
All in favor of the motion on the table, which is a start date of Wednesday? All opposed. Okay, passes, um, five to one, because we don't have Amy Wall. Um. All right, so, sup- I'm hoping we can do these quick. Um, subcommittee reports, finance and facilities, um, we met last week in preparation for this week, in preparation of kind of meet, was that last week?
The week before.
No, so it wasn't last week. It was the week before. So we met on the seventeenth of February.
Yes.
Um, and it, it was in preparation for this meeting and, uh, the FinCom liaisons were there and we were talking with them some more. Um, and really, it's just kind of more of what we've already talked about tonight. And, and that was a lot about kind of process and making sure that they're all set for, um, you guys going to see them, you're going, you're attending their meeting on the, um, on Thursday night.
Oh, yes, yes, correct.
Okay. And that was pretty much it. Um, do we have a high school working group update at all?
No, not since the last meeting.
Okay.
So we have, we've gotten feedback from MSBA
Oh, okay.
in regard to the space summary.
Okay.
So we submitted the two-thousand-page document from our architects and from Left Field.
Right.
Um, they've gone through that information and they've provided us feedback, um, you know, by, by category. And so we're looking at updating or getting an update from our architect and Left Field tomorrow morning, um, on the space summary that was submitted in, in our initial education plan.
And will that, will that then be presented at the next meeting of the group?
We had talked about March, uh, the second meeting in March, having uh someone from Left Field come and presenting.
No, I don't mean, I, I don't mean the school committee. I meant the, the, uh, public, permanent building committee slash high school work group.
Um, I'm assuming the P B C, Left Field will be updated, uh, they will update P B C. Correct.
That's great.
Um, labor and personnel?
Um, we're working on some, uh, some follow-up, uh, with regard to our meeting with the W E A of February nine. Um, we're working on some follow-up, um, uh, with the, the unit leadership there. Some of the concerns that they raised and thoughts and, and feedback to present back to them. Uh, we met this morning, uh, had that as a topical conversation. Also, we'll be, uh, meeting, uh, which will be our second meeting, but our first actual negotiation with a unit C, the paraprofessionals, next Wednesday, a week from tomorrow.
Student services, Mike?
Yep, so we, uh, our last meeting was on February sixteenth, and Val Dryning came and talked to us a lot about the intervention program on the math side. I felt very bad for Val, because most of us were in a mini coma after our marathon session the night before, so. Uh, so you could see there was no energy at all in this call, so I felt, I felt terrible for her. But, you know, she forged on nonetheless. And then we talked a little bit about visiting all the schools, which, um, I said earlier today, I'm so excited. I can't wait to get into the schools. I've wanted to do that since I came here, so finally we'll have an opportunity. So Kara, thanks for scheduling all those. Really looking forward to it. That's, that's the big part.
Kevin, anything more on the policy?
Uh, no, I think we're good.
Okay.
Future dates, so we've got a meeting next Tuesday that begins at seven o'clock. Seven o'clock.
Looks at me when she looks.
Well, because, I just want to make sure you're there. Um, with a public hearing that begins at seven fifteen. So we will do kind of like all our beginning stuff. Um, and then we will, at seven fifteen exactly, kind of move to the public hearing, where we will hear from the public on, on, uh, feedback on the budget, and then we will return to the agenda, kind of as planned. Um, school committee comments. Kevin?
Um, just real quick, as people start to do more, uh, and, and more outside of the home, as we all kind of adjust to where we are now, there's been some great sports games going on and very successful. Um, there's also some opportunities in the arts. The competition play, we'll be performing in North Reading, so there could be opportunities for people to see some great, um, both sports and, uh, performance by our students. So definitely, uh, seek those out and, and take advantage of, of those opportunities. Just want to congratulate those that have particularly have been recognized and doing really well, um, from wrestling to basketball, hockey, um, et cetera. So it's been, it's been, uh, really exciting to kind of follow along from afar, but now hopefully more in person.
Nice. Amy?
Just, just to remind folks that you just said that next, next week's the budget hearing. Um, I think it's really important, um, for parents to come out if they feel strongly, this budget is about your students. And so if there's something that you feel strongly that your school might, might need, then we need to hear from you collectively. We don't have a kid in every school. So I, I feel like, I, I'd love to see a big crowd here. That's all. Thanks.
Mike?
Uh, yeah, a couple, a couple of things. First of all, you know, at our last meeting, we had a pretty lengthy conversation with Anthony Choi. Uh, and I asked a lot of probing questions, uh, you know, and I don't want him in any way to feel that I was trying to discredit his credentials. He's doing a great job, probably, probably, I can't imagine being on any board of health during all this crisis, because you're trying to, people are demanding certainty where certainty doesn't exist to some extent. So, uh, I highly respect him, and if anything was in any way perceived as being condescending at all, that was clearly not my, my intent. So I applaud him for what he's doing. It's a thankless position. Uh, second thing, I just want to put in a plug for any parents out there that have special education, uh, children that, that are looking for assistance with I E Ps or five oh fours. CPAC is a tremendous resource, so Chris Martone Levin, uh, Chrissy Loftus and Ann Herzog. I highly encourage anyone who's struggling with this in any way, shape, or form to please reach out to them. They're a great resource. That's it. Thank you.
Stephen?
Um, yeah, I would again, you know, thank the parents that came out to speak. And I know I feel like we're on the tail end of sort of some real contentious sort of debate, um, and sharing of ideas recently. And in all seriousness, I, I appreciate all of the voices and what patience has been there. You know, we're all just working together to try and make it, um, an, an easy transition back for, for everyone. And no, like, I don't think politics ever came into play. I think it's just been from a, a science and health policy perspective, and that's, that's how I felt. I think that's what guided most of us, uh, through this entire thing for the past couple of years, so. Um, just thank everyone for their input, um, again. Um, a couple of community things is, uh, the Greenwood Gator Gallup is coming up on April ninth. Um, I think registration is still open. You can get a T-shirt if you sign up. I think today might be the last day. Um, over at the Woodville, uh, they kicked off the Read-a-thon this week. Uh, Kids at the Woodville in Two Days, read for thirty thousand minutes, uh, which I think is amazing. Uh, crashing, just breaking through records that we had last year. Um, and then lastly, that the, um, the counseling, um, group over at, I believe, the Galvin started up chat with the counselor. Um, and that's going to be the first and third Wednesday, uh, of every month from twelve to one lunchtime. Um, and you can just zoom in, so it's like
Starts tomorrow.
Starts tomorrow. Um, and just to know that it's, you don't have to have a problem. It can just be a question. Um, for anyone that sort of has, you know, sort of students in district, it really doesn't matter where they are along the line, just stop in, chat. Um, I think everyone that's involved in this program is really excited and hoping that, um, that people take advantage of it. Because I feel like they want to, they want to help and they want to be that resource. So I would just highlight that.
Great. Tom?
Uh, thank you. Uh, I guess I'd like to, uh, I'd like to, to echo Mike's, uh, thoughts and, and appreciation for, for Mr. Choi. He certainly is a tru- as I mentioned earlier tonight, a wonderful professional, has helped us uh, with some very difficult, uh, decisions, and I think he's always, uh, played it very, um, uh, very, you know, from a public health, uh, 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 point of view. And, and that has to be respected and understood, and, and I think his, his work should be, should be appreciated far more than, than, than criticized. Um, so I, I, I couldn't agree more with, with Mike's, uh, compliment of him. Uh, I may also say that I also thank and appreciate the, um, the, the continued outreach from many members of the community, parents and others, around, around the issues of the day. Um, you know, certainly, you know, masking may, uh, we may see a decline in, in outreach in the near future. Um, and if we don't, that's okay too. I think we always want to welcome, uh, uh, parents and, and community members when they've got something to, to share. Uh, so I certainly appreciate those that came out tonight, those that came out in the past, those that have sent us emails. Continue to encourage, uh, that that happened. That helps certainly to inform, uh, lots of, of, of our decision-making, uh, while not entirely. Uh, I, and also wanted to echo, uh, Stephen's thought, and I'm pleased that you, that you took it head-on and said that this has nothing to do with politics. And I was a little taken aback to, to actually hear that. But, but nonetheless, I think we've bent over backwards to do really good work around keeping it around science and public health information. And even when we disagreed, um, it was, it was a substantive thoughtful conversation. And, but we're in a different place now, and I want to continue to, to thank everyone. Thank my colleagues around the table and thank the superintendent and the entire, uh, school district team, teachers, faculty, staff, uh, nurses especially, right? But everyone, um, who has led us through and worked us through and protected our kids through, um, a really challenging, a, a couple of years. And we don't know what's ahead, uh, but we do it with, uh, with sincerity and with, with an eye on, on, uh, for, and the best interests of, of, of all. So just, again, a thank you to, to, to your team, Doug.
Um, I'm going to go back to some more community stuff. Um, so we've got a senior show coming up on the eleventh and twelfth at the Galvin. I think it's probably a fundraiser, my guess. Um, so that's happening. Is there a theater performance that's next weekend or this coming weekend, or is it not?
I saw a post, so their competition play, their one act is a bunch of schools are going to be performing together. So that's what I was referring to, but I'm not sure if there's others.
Got it. Okay, so, and they're performing?
At North Reading.
Okay, that's, okay. Um, so their big performance must not be for a few more weeks then. For some reason, I had it that that was early March, but I think maybe what you're referring to, Kevin, is what I was thinking. Um, Lynn Lyons is speaking as part of
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up.
Parent University.
Yeah, our, our Parent University series is kicking off on Thursday night with Lynn Lyons. And then we have, um, Missy Lesser the following week, and then, um, some choice workshops the last two weeks of March, so that starts up this week.
Um, Kara, do they need to pre-register for the Lynn Lyons?
So the way we, we, um, promoted the, uh, uh, it was promoted on Facebook. We sent a messenger. If you click on the link, it registers you for the webinar.
Okay, that's what I thought, and it, we've got lots of seats for that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's her, um, link, so she has pretty big capacity, so I think we'll be okay.
Okay. Um, and then, uh, I understand that the basketball team won tonight. So that was happening kind of earlier while, while we were meeting in here. Um, we've got, um, the hockey team is playing Thursday night in their first round of playoffs. And the girls' basketball team is playing on Friday night, so there's a, there's a good lineup of, um, and, and we have the home court advantage in all of those, um, which is, is awesome. So good luck to all those teams. And I think with that, we can make a motion to, um, to adjourn.
Sounds good. I move the school committee adjourn its meeting on Tuesday, March one, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, discussion, seeing none, all in favor? All right, we're all set. Thanks, everybody. Good night.